Brian Turbett.
President.
Ken Bogrand.
Here.
Libby Gibson.
President.
Roberto Santa Maria.
President. Happy birthday, David.
Amy Baxter.
Here.
We have Paula Leary with us for the NRTA.
I'm here.
And we have John Georgia with us from Town Council.
President.
And we have a number of other people who will be joining us throughout the meeting. I think we'll just introduce them as we go through. We are using Zoom webinar for our meetings, which allows for the public to participate in the meeting as an attendee. Attendees must register to participate. The registration link is unique to the meeting. The registration link can be found in the description of the Nantucket Government TV YouTube live feed for the meeting. People registering to be an attendee must use their names, otherwise they will not be allowed to participate in the discussion. Attendees will join in listening mode. They can click the raise the hand button if they wish to speak. The chair will call on those who have raised their hands in the order in which they were raised. This open meeting of the Select Board is being conducted remotely, consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12th, 2020, due to the state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of the COVID-19 virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of the COVID-19 virus, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings, and as such, the governor's order suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in the publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order, which you can find posted with agenda materials for this meeting, allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded, so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will feature public comment under the Zoom webinar functions, as I previously mentioned. This meeting is being recorded. All attendees are participating by video conference accordingly. Please be aware that other folks may be able to see you and to take care not to share the screen of your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. All supporting materials have been provided to the members of this body are available on the town's website unless otherwise noted. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda materials unless we know otherwise. The chair will introduce the speakers on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, people can raise their hands for questions or comments. Please remember to meet your phone or computer when you are not speaking. Please remember to speak clearly in a way that helps us generate accurate minutes. If you wish to engage in conversation with other members, please do so through the chair, taking care to identify yourself. Every vote this evening will be taken by roll call. Okay, with that, I'm going to open the meeting of the Nantucket Regional Transit Authority. And then we will move on to the Select Board meeting, which will start as a joint meeting with the Nantucket Regional Transit Authority. First up, we have an update on the commuter park and ride.
Yes. So back in February 12th, 2020, when the world was good, the board had approved to provide bus service and have the Two Fairgrounds Road as a park and ride. The NRTA, we're going to implement that this summer, and we will actually drive through the lot. We're able to do this by changing the airport route frequency from 20 minutes to 30 minutes. So this will mirror what we were doing when we serviced the lot before. From 7:00 to 9:30, we'll have two buses that are just going to and from from town, not on a set schedule. It'll be a continuous service, kind of a drop and go, but we estimate approximately every 15 minutes. And then we'll combine it with the airport service from 10:00 to 6:00 and the, from 10:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. And we've added an inbound stop at Salem and Candle Street. So in the height of the summer, people don't need to ride around the Main Street block and add time to their schedules. I know there may be more things, and I'm happy to stay on for the Select Board discussion on that.
Other questions, comments? Do you need any kind of action for us, or this is just an update?
This is just an upgrade for the service part because you had already approved it. We just didn't run it summer 2020. So we're going to do it this year.
Okay. This is, we also are, Jason Bridges?
Yeah, I think this is great. This is, you know, a couple of years of planning this. I'm glad it's happening. How many spaces will be, is going to be provided for people to park and take this?
Approximately 241. There's some other activities that are going on in that lot this summer. It will be overnight parking.
Okay. Can you remind me, commercial parking is happening there overnight or during the day?
Yes.
For both?
With some restrictions and limits that I believe is going to be coming before the Select Board, but yes, we've been working with Chief Pittman.
Okay. Thanks.
Yep.
Our next agenda item is also public comment. So if anyone wishes to make a comment on this item, this was a service that we were trying to get going last summer and dropped it because of the pandemic. And it's great to see it coming back and moving us forward into this summer, which we expect to be a busy one.
Yes, now we just need everyone to promote it, businesses, the chamber, to get their employees to park there. So we'll be working on a joint marketing campaign for that as well.
That's great. Kristin?
And I should, I guess I should let you know too, it's a park and ride, but we've secured about 18 spaces behind the middle school with the Nantucket Public Schools and have executed a license agreement for that to be available this summer from June 28th to August 26th. So there'll be 18 spaces available there, and people can utilize the Anna Drive Stop on the Mid Island Loop. So we've added a couple more. We still have the Muse and Fairgrounds as park and ride lots as well.
Excellent. Kristi Ferentzela?
Thank you. And Paula, can you just remind us of the dates of when the Two Fairgrounds Lot Route will be going?
Yep, May 28th, which is the Friday before Memorial Day, and then it'll run through Labor Day, 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m.
Perfect. Thank you.
Yep, you're welcome.
Okay, shall we move on to the approval of minutes from the November 18th meeting?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor by roll call. Melissa Murphy?
Aye.
Kristi Ferentzela?
Aye.
Jason Bridges?
Aye.
Matt Phoebe?
Aye.
John Holgate, aye, that carries unanimously. Approval of contract amendment with VTS of Mass Inc. Paula, did you want to?
Yes, VTS of Mass Inc. is the operating and management company of both our elderly and disabled van service and our fixed route service. So I'm requesting the contract be amended to modify the period of services from June 20, June 2020 through October 2020. And the reason for this is that's when the fixed route service will next go out to bid and to be able to combine both services in one RFP. And it has been approved by council that we're able to do this.
Okay, so it's from June 30 to October 31, right?
Yep, yes.
And we need a motion? Is there further questions?
Move approval?
An authorized need a sign, please.
Yes.
Authorizer sign.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor by roll call. Melissa Murphy?
Aye.
Kristi Ferentzela?
Aye.
Jason Bridges?
Aye.
Matt Phoebe?
Aye.
John Holgate, aye, that carries unanimously. Any other business?
Um, yes, if you don't mind, I'd just like to inform the board that we have been, the NRTA has been providing trips to the VFW for vaccinations. Pretty much since it started, we've deviated the Old South Road Route into the VFW, and we've probably done close to 100 trips with that. And we've probably done another 20 or 30 with the van service to get the 65 and older group out there. We're very happy to do it. We're happy to serve the community in that capacity. And I think it speaks kudos of the essential services that the NRTA provides. And now, year round, we were able to do this. So I just wanted to let the, let the board know that.
That's really great. Thank you, Paula. I'm going to leave the NRTA meeting open and move over to our April 28th Select Board meeting. I will call the meeting to order. I, the only change I believe we're going to make to this agenda is that we are going to move up the NRTA advisory board in case we need to have any further discussion on the park and ride lot. And I think that there was maybe an additional announcement.
Madam Chair?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I forgot to mention it. This just happened right before the meeting. With the board's approval, we'd like to put off the Island Home Quarterly Budget Report to next week.
Okay, so we will not be having that budget report this evening. Is there, are there any further comments on the update of the Two Fairgrounds Road commuter lot? Park and ride service?
I don't know if Libby has anything, but there will be some things that will need to happen there to make this run effectively and efficiently. Libby and I and Rob, and as I said, Chief Pittman have been on some calls, so I think we have, it's going to be a timing thing to get it done, but you know, we've identified a bus stop location within, within that area. Depending on the road work, we can use that for Entrance and Fairgrounds Road or Old South Road. And just some, the signage of the lot, I think, is going to be important. So we'll just continue to work on that and see what the layout is and designate parking spaces for different types of vehicles.
Any further questions or comments? Okay, well, thank you so much, Paula. Looking forward to seeing how this all goes.
Yep, thank you.
Next, we'll turn over to our regular announcements. Pass it to Libby.
I'm sorry, Madam Chair, thank you. I think the DPW Director is going to, Rob, are you ready to explain the Arbor Day proclamation and potentially read it?
Sorry, Libby, can you repeat that? Are we talking about the National Public Works Week?
No, we are talking about the Arbor Day proclamation. We don't have Public Works Week on the agenda yet. The Arbor Day proclamation?
Arbor Day. Yes, I'm sorry. I got to apologize. I don't have it in front of me.
Okay. I, I do have it in front of me, and I-
I'll screen, sure.
Okay. In the meantime, Rob, is, are there events associated with Arbor Day that you want to mention?
No.
Well, Arbor Day is actually normally, without a pandemic ongoing, we would have seedlings handed out to the public. This year, we are not doing that. Similar to last year, we had to cancel our normal Arbor Day celebration. We will be undertaking a number of tree plantings associated with repopulating our public shade trees that have been removed for maintenance, but nothing specific to Arbor Day, other than celebrating, I believe, our 21st, hopefully, our 21st year as a tree city.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, we've got the Surfside Road Sewer Improvement Project, and I think David is going to give us a brief update on where we are with that project.
Good evening. Thank you, Libby. Yes, project's going very well. The detours and everything seem to be going fairly smoothly. We haven't had any real issues. They have been paving, they're supposed to be paving every Friday going forward. Last Friday, they couldn't pave, Friday before, because of the plant issue, so they did it on Monday. They'll be paving again this Friday. Everything that they've dug up. The only issue that we've run into so far is there has been some missed markings that either DigSafe missed or whatever, that last night we actually ended up hitting a primary conduit going over to one of the houses. So there was an interruption in service, but it was because of a non-marked utility that was pretty quickly resolved by an electrician. Other than that, it's been going very well. I haven't heard of too many different complaints, but we're going to keep moving right along.
Thanks, David. I think that's it for announcements.
Okay. Very good. COVID-19 Weekly Update. Are there any opening public or board comments? If not, I will turn it over to our Public Health Director, Roberto Santa Maria.
Good evening. I'm going to go ahead and share the screen as usual. Okay. So little by little, I'm starting to condense all the, all the slides so that we don't spend the whole night here. So far, we've had 31,611 tests, a total positive of 1,528. The last few days, we've had a positivity rate of 5.7, which is down from two weeks ago, which is almost at 7%. So little by little, we are getting through this, but I think what's important to understand with the numbers we're seeing in Nantucket, as well as across the state, is that COVID is one of those illnesses that's probably going to be here to stay, kind of like the flu and the common cold. But it's, it's just going to be part of the daily lives as we move back to relative normality. Something like eight cases here and there. That's just, it's nothing to be too worried about right now as the vaccines get rolled out. And as we've learned, you know, the vaccines are still really good at preventing hospitalizations and death. So those numbers have been drowned down dramatically across the country. So as we move forward to sewage metrics, you'll see the same, what I was mentioning, a rather downward trend. We're down to seeing around 10 cases a day, and we're seeing a little bit lower than that lately, so that's really good news. As far as this vaccine tracker goes, we've done, we've done over 12,000 case doses now. 5,000 people are fully vaccinated, and that is, that is as of two days ago. So I think we're moving forward. And then as we, I think we're starting, we're getting some good news on the vaccine front, now that the J&amp;J vaccine has been re-approved and allowed to roll out. So hopefully, we should be getting some of that soon. And then as far as reopening Massachusetts goes, we received an order from Governor Baker yesterday, a press release, where he's talking about lifting the outdoor mask orders starting on this Friday. So that's, that's a discussion that we're going to be having at the Board of Health meeting at 1:00 p.m. on Friday. It will not be televised due to the conflicting HDC meeting, so if you want to participate in that, you do have to log into Zoom. And that is, that information is posted on the Board of Health Agenda. So we'll have that discussion on Friday. But you'll see here that there's four major milestones, April 30th, May 10th, May 29th, and August 1st, and slowly reopening. And in a nutshell, I'll leave this up for a little bit, but in a nutshell, what we're coming to see is that by August 1st, we're looking to be reopened as a, as a state. The state of emergency will still be in place, in case we do have to go back, or if there's more surges later, or things like that. But if things go well, you know, knock on wood, we should be in pretty decent shape starting August 1st. And with that, I'll let, I'll let you guys ask questions.
Has there been any additional guidance given on public meetings?
As far as public meetings go, I haven't heard anything, but the gathering orders are relaxing. So it wouldn't, I wouldn't, I wouldn't say you can't meet in person anymore because that, that, you know, we went from 10 to 100, and now, starting next month, we're going to 200 people indoors. And as far as I know, the community room holds less than that. So as long as we maintain some distancing, we do still need to wear masks if we're in there, and we do still need to maintain distance inside. So it's the most capacity as you can get while still maintaining those distance protocols. But to my knowledge, there's nothing really stopping you from meeting in person anymore.
Thank you. Melissa, and then Amy Eldridge from the public has her hand up.
Oh, thanks so much. Roberto, I was watching a news segment last night, and one of the physicians on it was talking about the importance of tracking the demographics of your vaccine distribution. Is that something that we can easily start tracking? The age and ethnicity of the folks who are getting the vaccine on island?
We are tracking it. If you give me a few seconds, I can pull it up from-
I can even give you a few minutes if you want to take another question and come back to that. That's fine with me.
Yes, yes, please.
Okay. Thank you very much.
I'll take Amy Eldridge, and then I'll go to you, Jason.
I think Amy's muted.
Yeah, Amy, can you hear me? You are muted.
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yep, you're good now. We can hear you.
So are we looking at the town staying more on the state guidance in that image that was just shown with the different dates? So like, do we look like we're going to be more socially able to take our masks off out in public if we can safely distance and stuff, or is that, are we going to steer away from the state guidance, or are we going to try to be in line with the state on a lot of these things?
I would, I'm going to recommend on Friday that we stay in line with the state. As the, even what we saw here on Nantucket, we did see some outdoor transmission. We're not saying that it doesn't happen outside, but it is, the bulk of all our cases have been from indoor, inside-home transmission and indoor gatherings. So I would, I'm going to recommend that we, that we remove the outdoor mask order, but it is the board's decision.
And then just a follow-up on that one is, I understand, like, workplace situations, so that obviously would still apply to, like, landscapers and, and construction where you're kind of close quarters, can't social distance. So that still applied because it's like a workplace scenario?
Yes, the state is, is, the state guidance is saying that if you can't social distance, if you can't be six feet apart for long periods of time, then you should still wear masks, even if you are outside. That's, it's explicitly called out on that. So in workplace situations, we're still going to recommend that people wear their masks, especially at construction sites and things like that. But what you're also seeing is oftentimes, we have landscape crews, for example, that are on a, that are on a site, you know, maybe three or four people on a 20,000 square foot lot, and they're not even 15 feet within each other. So that wouldn't, I wouldn't be expecting masks there. It would be something you know, three, you know, three drywallers in one room, in one building, doing the work together, which you should be wearing masks anyway because of the dust.
Right. Awesome. Thank you guys so much for your time.
Thanks, Amy. Jason?
Hey, Madam Chair. This is a pretty big announcement. This is a lot. Question for Roberto and Amy. When the state comes out with stuff like this, it's usually very big, and it's not drilled down yet. So is it, are we at the point where there's like, there's lots of questions for events and this, and we just don't have the information on all kind of what's to come? Is it, is there like a two or four week kind of waiting period for them to fill in all the gaps?
Okay, I hear events, and I start talking. So we, there are a couple of things that we're still waiting for the state to update the sector-specific protocols and guidelines, because we have the, the basic outline, understand the different gathering limits that are going to change certain things with restaurants and things of that sort, bars and stuff, being able to open with seated service and things of that sort. So what we're waiting for is a little bit more drill down in those sector-specific protocols, especially performance and other things. Hopefully, I would expect it by now, but this week, I've already communicated to the industry that give us a little bit here to digest this and translate it into Nantucket. Not that it's stricter or different, just how it applies to the specific things that we have, and then how we'll take in other events or requests that come in as this rolls out. So I have communicated with them that we'll have some info sessions possibly next week or the week after, as we start to learn more and understand how, you know, we roll out again into this.
Just going to piggyback on that, too. One of the reasons why it takes a little bit longer as well to start ironing these out is, for example, he made this announcement yesterday at, he did the press release at 11:00 a.m. And we had our State Department of Public Health call with all the Boards of Health agents at 9:30 a.m. that day. We didn't find out until 9:30 that he was going to make this announcement at 11:00. So it does catch us by surprise sometimes at the local level, well, more than sometimes, every time at the local level. So it does take a few weeks for us to iron out the kinks there. I do have the data open for the ethnicity breakdown, so I'm going to go ahead and just jump into that, if that's okay, Don? Okay. Screen two. Okay, so this is, so we have this report by every county. Luckily, we are our own county, so it's a lot easier. But this is the report that gets updated every week. It will be updated again tomorrow on the state website, but we can pull this, and this is the, the race of ethnicity that we have, the breakdown that we have. So as we go along, they have, you know, they are, they are going by the census population, which is unfortunately all we have at the state level, all they have to go on. But as we go along, they have proportions set aside here, coming down to 100%. You'll see the population that they're using for us, which we know is wrong, but is what we're working off of. And as we go along, we're starting to see that we're making some inroads in the, the black and Hispanic community, for example, which is 37%, which you're seeing in comparison to some of the other towns, which I can scroll up and down and show. We're right on par with the rest of the state in that, and in some cases, ahead of most. So which is, which is good. We do want to be better. And actually, right before this meeting, I was in a meeting with the hospital and our COVID Vaccine Task Force Group. And we, if, if we can lift this little bottleneck on, on vaccines, we actually already have plans to be able to reach out to specific communities. So hopefully, that supply issue gets solved soon. We've reached out to Secretary Sutter's, Dylan Fernandez, Julian Seer. I know Gary even spoke to Bill Keating. So we're, hopefully, that bottleneck gets, gets opened up soon. But we are in decent shape. One other thing that I want to show before we, before I close, sorry if I scroll too fast here for everyone. It is really good to see when we go down to cumulative percentage of individuals by county residence. So these are people who are claiming they live in Nantucket year-round. So when you look at the state as a whole, the three best counties are Barnstable County, Dukes County, and Nantucket County. And the next closest county is Berkshire and Essex. So and that, and we're ahead of them by a factor of five. So 5%. So that is, this is what the, the, the task force at the state sees, Secretary Sutter's group sees, they see that the Cape and the Island is doing very well in, in doses as far as their population percentage goes. And since they're, they added this slide to their weekly report because they're also stratifying out people who claim Nantucket as their permanent residence, so that it's not just that artificially inflated population that we've been seeing, which is really good to see. So there's at least one dose, so approximately 38% of our population. Population for people who claim Nantucket as their primary residence. So we're at, we're, we're doing very well as far as proportion of the population goes. So we are going to watch this. This weekend, uh, to see where, how much of the demand for the vaccine goes, and if the demand is, is low like it was this last weekend. Then we'll start that individualized um workplace outreach, uh, specific gathering point outreach, things like that.
Sorry, Melissa and then Kristy?
Thank you, I just wanna follow up, Madam Chair, thank you so much, Roberto, I appreciate that very much, um. And I just wanna um, give a lot of thanks and kudos to the COVID vaccine volunteer group that's. Get, been working together with your office, Roberto, um, and helping organize vaccine drives. Um, I was lucky enough to be able to help them on Saturday. And one of the things that I noticed, Roberto, was some vaccine hesitancy from some members of the community and. Um, I made this suggestion at the time and happy to pass it on to you now. Um, if we had something in writing at, at those stations to be able to hand out. Um, you know, I was doing the best that I could to reassure people. But it, it felt like if I had something to hand them, um, to talk about why it's important to get vacs- uh vaccinated. And that it's safe, um, that, that may go a long way to reassuring some people, I, I even had to show one gentleman my own inhaler to assure him that I was fully vaccinated with asthma and I'm okay. So I think there's, you know, there's a lot of misconceptions we're up against, um, in, with a, with a lot of folks and anything we can do to help that. But I, I do wanna thank that um vaccine response team for their quick action. And I, I'm hopeful that that targeted approach um can, can work. Um, and uh, also, you know, I, I know you know this because I've emailed you, but I'm such a huge supporter of the, the possibility of getting a mobile vaccine unit here. Um, to, to amplify that effort to meet people where they are. Um, rather than somewhat complex system of the registration process through the hospital, so, thanks so much for that.
Yeah, give credit where, yeah, I have to give credit where credit is due, the, that's the ROT group that um, Brooke and the Council on Human Services ended up setting up. Um, through, with Jericho as well, uh, they've been tremendous at that, and uh, yes, that. Uh, the issue of the, of having a fax sheet uh in multiple languages and stuff was brought up. Um, I believe there is one ready to go. I'll connect with Jericho to make sure that it's out this weekend. Um, and yes, the vo- a mobile vaccine program is already planned, we have that. Oh, we just need to open up that vaccine. Bottleneck.
Kristy?
Thank you, and thank you, Roberto, for that update, it's, it's nice to get some good news about having vaccines available. Um, and I know a couple of weeks ago, we were a little concerned about getting vaccines to the island. And then this past week, there was the INM article saying that not enough people were signing up, so is that going to affect us being able to get doses from the state and are we able to fill those slots?
So we were able to fill the slots, um, by Monday, they were all filled. Um, there's, there were a couple of factors coming into that. Uh, one, not the least of which was that it was also vacation week. Uh, some people were just weren't here on Saturday and Sunday, or coming back on Sunday. Uh, so they had our, you know, that we, some of the commentary that we heard at the clinics and from phone calls and stuff. Is that people had already said, well, it's already Sunday, I'm not gonna be getting a. A, uh. Appointment anyway, and then that article came out and it really spurred people being like, oh, maybe I can do it, so that might, that was one of it, one of the issues. Um, the other part that we did run into was. The messaging that we had out was pretty dire, it was hard to get doses, so some people uh straight up said, I'm not gonna try. This week, uh, I'm not gonna get a dose anyway. So we did have some of that happen. Uh, we, so we're going to monitor this weekend to see how that goes, and if we do have a similar issue where. Uh, by Sunday, we still have open slots or vaccines available, things like that. Uh, we can even use those extra doses that we would have to start doing this mobile vaccine uh program.
Matt?
Yeah, the, I think the other thing that's happening is, is a lot of people who work Saturday morning when it starts and, you know, in the, and, and it's not convenient to go to. Uh, you know, get a shot during working hours, because they're working one of their two jobs, we've talked about that before. I, I think there's, if we could have some incentive, especially for young people to do it, what I'm seeing is we're asking. Employees, you know, we're still requiring them to quarantine for five days and then get a negative test before they enter the pod. And so, but we say you don't have to do that if you show up vaccinated. So most of our kids, you know, most of our new hires or existing hires, old hires, are coming here vaccinated. You know, and so I think if we could find some, if the Board of Health could find something like that, if. You know, if going into a bar or, or doing whatever required a vaccination, I think you'd see the young people do it. You know, if they, if you had, if you had to be vaccinated to go drink beer, they'd be all vaccinated and within, you know, four or five weeks, they'd be done. And so, you know, I, I think we have to sort of meet people where they are, but also meet them incentivize. Where they are, and so that, I had a friend of mine who had that idea, said, hey, just, you know, make you, make it be, be vaccinated to go into bars. Employees and, and attenders, or ask the state to have twenty-five percent more, uh, you know. Y- more occupancy if you're all fully vaccinated, make it optional, you don't have to do it, you don't make everyone do it, if we did something like that. I think we would have, we would have all those young people vaccinated very quickly, I thought it was a decent suggestion, I hope something like that is discussed at the Board of Health level.
And, and Jeri- Jericho is definitely looking, um, connecting with uh businesses right now to look at some sort of vex, uh incentive program, things like that. Uh, that is a process that we are looking into. Um, as far, you know, as, as legal as we can do, we, there are some things we can't mandate, for example. But um, and I have, you know, Johns on, on the call here in case to correct me if I'm wrong on any of it. But yeah, we're, Jericho is working on setting up some incentives, and uh, one of the things that he is also working on is to, uh, well, we're working on it together, is to connect. Uh, businesses so that if we do have vaccines available, uh, in, in order for us to go to a specific business. So if, if they're willing to say, you know, this Monday and then Monday, three or four weeks from now, depending on Moderna or Pfizer. Or if we get Johnson and Johnson. Uh, so that we can actually go to the business and vaccinate everyone there who is willing to be vaccinated, employees as a whole. So we're, we're working on multiple ways of trying to get that done.
Thank you. Matt, did you have a follow up and then I'll go to Kristy?
Even if it wasn't legal or we couldn't require it. The fact that we asked, asked for it, and it was, if had a newspaper article and, oh my god, they're asking for this. The, the, it would be on the internet or beyond all the, uh, you know, Instagram and all the stuff the young people go on that I don't. And I think they would, you know, they would be signing up in their hometowns for the vaccinations, they would be like, I wanna be able to go out to the bar this summer. You know, it's gonna be open, I wanna go, they would be getting it, I just think that's, so it's just, just a thought for you guys to think about.
Sounds good.
Kristy?
Thank you, just two questions, um, one about vaccines, I know Dan's Pharmacy had. Signed up and I'm wondering if they've been able to secure any vaccines and if that distribution is going well. And a second one is, we were just looking at the demographics, is there anything on age and are we seeing a trend where the younger population isn't getting vaccinated? Um, I know it just opened up last week for the general population, so I don't think people under the age of fifty have really had a chance yet to sign up.
So twofold, um, that same. That same, uh. What's that word? Excel spreadsheet. Spanish, huh? Uh, that same Excel spreadsheet that I, that we had is, shows the age breakdown, so I can go ahead and pull that down, and of course I can't find it. Um, so I can pull that up in just a second. As far as are we seeing that, uh, any sort of hesitancy there, I'm not exactly sure we're seeing that right now. But we're, once I can crunch these numbers a little bit more, I can get that, I can get that information to you in more detail.
Melissa?
Thanks, Don, I just wanna call attention to, um, something Roberto shared with me that Florencia updated, which was, um. Links on the town website about where you can get tested and where you can um, get vaccine appointments and. As other places open up and become available, they'll put those resources on the website, so. People should, should take a look at that, um, I don't remember the address off the top of my head though, Roberto, is it, can you find it easily from the board, from your health department page?
Um, it's actually right on the COVID.
Page?
On the COVID page in the town website.
Perfect, thank you.
Um, and yes, uh, Dan's Pharmacy does have doses available through their uh Good Neighbor Park partnership. Um, and they have been able to give about twenty doses a day or so, uh, so it's, it is moving along, I think they said they're gonna be having. Uh, they're gonna, starting this week or next week, they're going to be receiving about two hundred doses a week. Uh, so that's, that's good news, uh, they're also doing uh testing uh there, and then uh, um. Act Dental Arts uh is, has their uh deodorant refrigerators and freezers and everything in order to start receiving vaccines, they signed up. To be part of the MIIS system, so as soon as they get uh vaccines, they'll be willing to give them to, and they are also doing. Uh, antigen and, and they received a PCR machine, so that they can start doing PCR testing as well. Uh, then. One more, health imperatives, they've signed up to be a uh vaccine area as well, but they haven't received any doses yet. Uh, so as soon as Act Dental Art and Health Imperatives get, are approved, they'll be moving forward with that.
Are there any other questions? We'll move on to the next agenda item, I think that Brooke Moore is here to do an update on the COVID Resource Response Team.
Yes, hi, uh, thank you, Madam Chair, um, uh, some of what we're doing has already been talked about, but um, I was asked to come today. I just wanted to let the community know that a, a group of volunteers, including um Deb DeBois from the Immigration Resource Center, Amanda Wright from Fair Winds, Elise Norton from the Family Resource Center. Kelly Cooney from the Nantucket Schools. And Jericho, Neely, and Heather Francis from the town have been meeting on a weekly basis. Um, throughout um, this year, and our uh first effort was getting people access to financial and other resources while they were in quarantine. And we sort of migrated into um Vaccine Equity Access um Team. As um, that became a big priority in the community. And our goal is to, has been to facilitate access to vaccine appointments for members of the community. Who have had difficulty um, accessing them due to limited um, resources technologically, language barriers, or who were unable. To log on due to work schedules when the appointments were all filling up on Saturday mornings. And um, the things we've been doing is we've been uh sharing weekly updates on social media in English, Spanish, and Portuguese on. Eligibility, and now that it's wide open, um, we've added helpful hints on the process of, of navigating the technology and the system. Uh, we've also had um vaccine uh appointment assistance uh programs at the Stop and Shop every Saturday morning from ten. To noon, and we've worked with people both on devices we've brought with us or their own um electronic phones, mostly phones, obviously. Um, to help them get through um, to an appointment. And um, the first, anecdotally, the first couple of weeks, the appointments were going in twenty minutes. Fifteen minutes, uh, the second week, and then the last couple of weeks, they've been open much longer, as we've talked about, everybody's been talking about. We think that was largely because of school vacation. Um, and so we'll see how that happens, we'll be there again this Saturday, and we'll see. Um, how the availability, how long it holds out, um. We've also done a pilot program with a landscaping company where um Jericho talked to them. And they provided the details of their employees' um information, and volunteers. Um, did the scramble on Saturday morning and scheduled um, an entire list of employees from one company. And basically, the trade-off was that the landscaping company in, in exchange for this assistance. Um, scheduling for their employees, uh, agreed to allow their employees to leave the job site for whatever appointment we were able to get them during the week. So um, that was, that worked really well, and we're hoping to expand that program as more appointments become available. Um, and then the other thing we've done is, um, as Erica shared on the screen, we've been distributing this little business card size card all over town. Um, with the QR code that takes folks directly to the hospital website um, to sign up. So uh, we're just trying to make it accessible to everybody as much as possible, and. As the number of appointments increase, we'd love to expand our efforts, and we will need additional volunteers if we wanna add additional locations and days. Um, for assistance, um, and so if anyone in the community listening would like to help us out. Um, the, I've set up an email, which is A C K C R R T. At gmail dot com if you'd like to help volunteer, and it's, but will both be for volunteers in physical locations, and then ultimately. Uh, we hope also to have more companies provide us information, and so people will also be able to do some scheduling from home. And not have to be out in public, so if you'd like to help out, please, please email us and we'll be in touch, so thank you very much, and um. Everybody working together to keep our community safe is what we're all about, so thank you.
Thank you. All of your efforts. Um, next, oh, sorry, Roberto?
Just one last thing, I found that age breakdown that Kristy was asking about, so I'll just put, pull it up real quick. So as far as the age breakdown goes, this is where we are, um, and what we are seeing is actually even though they did only open up last week. We are seeing that they have been, there hasn't been that much of a uh hesitancy, which is really good to know and good to see. Uh, this is for at least one dose, uh, I can scroll over to where it says fully vaccinated, but really what it comes down to. Is, is, this is, this is good news, um, the vaccine is still only approved for sixteen and older, uh, that's why that zero to nineteen years is still pretty low. Uh, but we're expecting the Pfizer vaccine to be approved for uh twelve to sixteen within the next few months, so that number should be going up too. And um, with that, I'll just close this off, um, thank you.
Melissa?
Donna, thank you, I just wanted to add, um, thanks to um, that COVID vaccine response team, um, that their efforts have really been, I think. In partnership with the health department and the hospital. And um, I wanted, just to follow up on something Matt said, my observation on Saturday was that actually a lot of businesses. Um, were just letting their employees come and get help for signing up without penalty, and also giving them the freedom to go get their shots whenever they could get them, so. I think we're seeing a lot of, um. Uh, oh gosh, what's the word? We're, we're seeing businesses rally around to make it as easy as possible for their staff to get vaccinated, so to Brooke's point, it's a great community effort, but a lot of thanks to that team for what they do.
Thank you, Melissa, um, can I turn it over to Kristy for the economic task force update?
Yes, thank you, and we have quite a, quite a few updates, it's tough to follow Brooke though with all the great news that they're doing for the community. Um, so we've been brainstorming ways to support nonprofits, um, and our mission is to support nonprofits and businesses have a successful season. And so we put a letter in the Select Board Packet tonight to support the theater workshops. Request to perform at Bartlet's Farm this week and, or the summer, and we're also just putting it out there for nonprofits to continue to work with the town and the chamber to. Um, amplify their uh businesses this summer, um, Amy and Janet have both said that they've been doing a phenomenal job of connecting with them and going through the um approval process with them. Um, we have a lot of updates on grants, which um. Very excited to notify, uh, the chamber and the town um, applied for a grant through the state for the Office of Business Development. Alongside the Martha's Vineyard Chamber and Dukes County, and we were awarded that grant. So both islands were awarded eight grants of seventy-five hundred dollars each to give up to businesses. So applications are open until May seventh for businesses to apply, and this is a tap into technology grant, and so this. Basically, you'll apply by May seventh, and then by the seventeenth, you'll be, if approved, you'll be enrolled to go through an audit to figure out which technology resources would help you succeed and adapt to COVID. Um, so it's kind of moving fast, all the funds will be used by the end of June, and so this will be a great way to um, help boost. Um, businesses this summer, kind of alongside the other grants. On that, um, we all, also announced that the Rock Solid Grant um has been awarded. It is, let me just find that, twenty-six businesses um received just over a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So that was the town funding from our fireworks and the town that is helping to support businesses everywhere, from restaurants to retail to healthcare providers. So that's going to be, a press release is going out later this week. And they'll also be looking to do a fall round of grants, so to help businesses adapt to the off-season. So very exciting news on that front. There's also a few new state grants that have opened up. The Restaurant Revitalization Program will be open on Friday. So we're encouraging restaurants to apply early, because as with most state programs, they tend to close quickly as soon as they receive more requests than they can fill. And we're also going to be looking to see if the town will want to apply for another Shared Streets program. We recently used this to help with a lot of the decking downtown, for the outdoor dining. We did ten thousand dollars towards, in total, towards these businesses downtown to help them. And I think that's about it. We talked a lot about the updates that Roberto went over, and that outdoor dining has started, and that was really a big discussion for us. And starting to think about how do we strategize for this post-COVID world. You know, if the state of the emergency did end on October, on August first, then outdoor dining would technically have sixty days and all the liquor extensions that we have. So we'd have to start thinking about what is that going to look like post-October? You know, do things need to go to town meetings? So the Economic Task Force is going to start discussing that, and I think it should also be on the Select Board radar to start having those policy discussions as soon as possible. And then lastly, we're going to move to every two weeks, so I'll be doing a Select Board update every two weeks going forward. Thanks. Happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Christie. Are there any questions? Great, great job with it. I'm looking forward to hearing who got all the grants. Are there any other reports or updates in regard to COVID-19? Okay. Next up, we have public comment for items not otherwise on our agenda for discussion. And I have a hand up from Sarah Ellis. Sarah, go ahead.
Hi, thank you for taking my question. I was just curious, when is the board to revisit? I believe I'm correct in asking this. There was a discussion when talking about the street closures downtown regarding whether or not Cambridge Street was going to be fully closed or partially. And I know there was some mention that that was going to be looked into. And then the other question was regarding Main Street and whether or not the decking was going to be put down for whatever restaurant on Main Street. And I didn't know if that was appropriate to ask about today.
Amy Baxter is on. Let me just get a quick update for you.
Absolutely. So both questions. On the Cambridge Street closure, Cambridge at South Water, we did close that today. The decision of the board was to close it at this time, full closure, allowing outdoor dining until only up to the end of Nautilus there, so only in their store frontage. And we would obviously observe the traffic pattern, determine if there is an issue as we go into the season that we would revisit it and when we have other options on the table to allow for either half the street or a later in the day closure with some other options. So that was the decision. We did put it down. They're going to start setting up in the next day or two. And we're just going to have to keep an eye on that and determine with public safety and traffic and other things if there is a need to revisit and make those changes. So we have all those options on the table, and we'll certainly be watching it closely daily. Secondly, on the Main Street and Lemon Press area, they've received approval from their neighbors to have some tables there along the sidewalk, as they did last year, with some improvements. So there will not be decking on Main Street. It was just too difficult to do with so many businesses. So they will just be having some seating on the sidewalk, so similar as last year. So I think hopefully that answered that.
Then may I just make one comment, please?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, and thank you, Amy. I just, I remember in the meeting regarding both downtown seating and the bar closures at a certain hour, that there was a remark, I believe from Matt, regarding the closures and also from Jason, and saying that it's easier to go and allow people more rather than, you know, to, to allow people to extend it in the future if need be. And I just, according to many people, realtors, et cetera, this summer is going to be wild. So it just seems, I remember Chief Pittman had concerns about the traffic regarding the boat and the closure of Cambridge Street. I understand a half-street closure. I just, it seems like, especially with the COVID restrictions being relaxed, the idea of having a whole-street closure just seems unfortunate since everyone has sacrificed this year. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Sarah. Are there any other public comments this evening? Hearing none, we'll move on to, there's no new business, approval of minutes, warrants, and pending contracts. Are there any questions or comments on those? Can we take them all as one motion?
I'll make a motion to approve. Second?
All those in favor, by roll call. Melissa Murphy?
Aye.
Christie Ferentzela?
Aye.
Jason Bridges?
Aye.
Matt Phoe?
Aye, and I have one question.
Okay. Well, I'll, I'll say aye too, and that carries unanimously, but go ahead and ask a question.
On Island Carpet, twenty-three thousand, is that for the fire station itself or the temporary building?
That is for the fire station. Correct?
Yes, okay. Citizen Departmental Requests, Nantucket Education Trust Inc. Request for Approval and Execution of Estoppel Certificate and Agreements Requested for Lease-Hold Mortgages with Hingham Institution of Savings on Properties Located at Two, Four, Six, and Eight Cow Pond Lane.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This goes back to two thousand and three, when the town agreed to provide a ground lease to the newly established Nantucket Education Trust. The concept behind this was that by creating a 501(c)(3), they would be able to build a building that would be able to use to be, provide housing for school activities. They have built the housing at Two, Four, Six, and Eight Cow Pond Lane, and they are now in the process of refinancing the existing mortgage on the property. So the estoppel requests are required by the ground lease, which, which requires the Select Board to approve this transaction. And basically, they're renegotiating a new mortgage for one million seven hundred and sixty thousand dollars and a line of credit for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The documentation has been reviewed, reviewed by Vicky Marsh, made certain changes to them, and has approved it and made a recommendation that the Select Board both approve and then execute the two different estoppel certificates, one for the mortgage and the other for the line of credit. I wanted to point out there that this, this transaction does not create any obligation for the town for repayment, because that is solely the responsibility of the education trust. So I'll be happy to answer any questions. John Rico, who is involved with the Nantucket Education Trust, is here too, if the Select Board have any questions for them. But this is a fairly straightforward transaction.
Thank you, Ken. Good evening, John. I would imagine the board probably doesn't have any concerns with this, but are there any comments? Any questions? Any motions?
I'll make a motion to approve. Second?
All those in favor, by roll call. Melissa Murphy?
Aye.
Christie Ferentzela?
Aye.
Jason Bridges?
Aye.
Matt Phoe?
Aye.
Don Holgate, aye. And thanks again, John, for being present. And gun. Thank you. Next up, we have Tuscan Corp. Request to, for a waiver of a town noise bylaw on May fifth from eight PM to midnight for a water connection at thirty-four Fairgrounds Road, resulting in a total road closure at that portion of Fairgrounds. I think Erica wanted to explain this.
Sure. So Tuscan Corp. needs to do a new water connection there at thirty-four Fairgrounds Road. It wouldn't be a total road closure in terms of from Fairgrounds Road to Surfside Road. It's a total road closure in terms of both lanes will be closed, but only for the section between Tacoma Way and Trotters Lane. And the noise by, we, they were going to start later, because that's such a heavily traveled road during the day. The thought was doing it later in the evening would, would lessen issues with traffic. So they may not need to go until midnight, but it's there just in case. The water company will be on-site too, stubbing it out. And I know that David Bisco is also here from Tuscan, if there's any further questions.
Are there any questions, concerns? The neighbors, I'm assuming, will be notified. Matt?
Yeah, I move approval. It said, it stated they were going to be notified in the packet, so I move approval.
A second.
All those in favor, by roll call. Melissa Murphy?
Aye.
Jason Bridges?
Aye.
Christie Ferentzela?
Aye.
Matt Phoe?
Aye.
Don Holgate, aye. That carries unanimously. Sorry, I'm trying to keep up with getting to the right parts in the packet along with the agenda. Licensing Administration Request for Approval and Execution of Twenty-Twenty-One Seasonal Population Increase Estimation Forms. Amy Baxter?
Thank you. So as we do every year about this time, as a local licensing authority, the Select Board must vote on the estimated seasonal population of Nantucket, as it estimates it to be on July the tenth of each year. The estimated population that you vote on is the basis for the set seasonal package store license quota, which I will show in just a second. As we explained in this document, I will show in a moment. It is based on what we've done for the past couple of years, the Nantucket Data Platform Report in twenty-seventeen, which provided at least the most data that we've had in recent years to show the seasonal population. That population showed at forty-five thousand. Traditionally, before that, we had said it at sixty-five thousand, but that was a estimation, was not based on a lot of data. So let me share my screen real quick here. And we will go over, hold on just a moment, what the quota is. And again, this is important this evening, because we are going to also be discussing it with these liquor license applications that we have coming up. So as you see here, we have quotas based on annual licenses, package stores, and seasonal package stores. This vote is for the seasonal quotas. Again, the estimate, estimation is forty-five thousand, based on the report that I included. Right here, we outline the licenses that we have now. With that population quota, you get one license for each five thousand people or fraction thereof. Those licenses are effective April first, and here until January fifteenth or any portion thereof. We currently have of the nine licenses allowed with that population, seven. I have listed here the seven that we currently have active. We have an application for one of these licenses this evening, and I also have received one for the second one, that would be coming up later in May. I will just briefly, before we get off here, to just explain that for annual licenses, there's a separate quota system that is based on the census every ten years. We're currently still operating on the twenty-ten census, which had a population of ten thousand one hundred and seventy-two. We have not been updated on that yet. Based on this, we have only one of those left, and I'll get more into this when we have the application for that one license. So just to further explain, we are just dealing with the seasonal quota operation now. And as in your report, we included the data report for twenty-seventeen that really looked at cell phone usage and travel and other numbers as well to get an estimate of our highest population in the summer being approximately forty to forty-five thousand people. I will stop to share now and ask if there are any questions.
Questions, comments? So we just need a motion?
I'll move that we accept the numbers as presented.
Sarah, second?
Second?
All those in favor, by roll call. Melissa Murphy?
Aye.
Jason Bridges?
Aye.
Christie Ferentzela?
Aye.
Matt Phoe?
Aye.
Don Holgate, aye.
Don, may I ask a quick question? Before the vote, is, is there a sense of when we'll next sort of update that information from the data platform? The twenty-seventeen seems a little far away at this point.
Amy, go ahead.
Um, that is something we would have to look into. You know, like I said before, for years had been done just as a basic estimation. This was the closest we've had to a study that was done on some of these numbers, so we can certainly pursue that. You know, as we come out of, I didn't think, you know, during a pandemic was appropriate time. So as we come out and see, you know, we, we expect there might be some regulations that shift during this time. So once we see that happens, we can certainly discuss internally different metrics we can use or ways that we can certainly really look into that. If that sounds good.
Yeah, just, Don?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's interesting that July tenth, if I got the date right, that's typically, we're in a little bit of a lull. Like we have the really big hit in the Fourth of July week, and then there's a bit of a lull for a week and a half or so, two weeks till we get to August. So that's, so forty-five thousand is probably a pretty solid number for that date. I would guess that we're, you know, fifty-fifty-two on those other times, based on what they were talking about in seventeen. But that's, you know, that's an informed guess. That isn't a fact.
Okay, next up, we have the request of conditional surrender of an annual wine and malt beverages with Cordial's Restaurant License by Pizza Jamel LLC, DBA Pizzeria Jamelle, for premises located at Two East Chestnut Street. Amy, I'm just wondering, should we be holding this until after the public hearing?
We discussed this earlier, and we can, yeah. You know, we wrote it such that, with advice that it was a conditional surrender, since this is a situation in which a current restaurant on-premise license is requesting to be an off-premise package store, and there's no direct legal route that way. They can't just transfer, so they have to surrender one. So the, the quick answer is yes, you can. We just put it in the normal place that we would normally put a surrender, and that's why it was written the way it is.
Would they be allowed to have both?
Not, especially not in that location. I think there's instances where you do have a retail off-premise location, but it has to be a very direct separation between the two, if it's in a similar area. And there's no way that's in such a small location. Yeah.
Okay, with your permission, oh, Matt and then Melissa?
Yeah, I'm gonna, I have to abstain from this one and, and the next couple, so I'm out.
Okay. Melissa?
Don, I guess my question to Amy is, if the package store is not approved, would they still want to surrender their license? So has there been conversation with them about that?
Yes, there has, and I'll certainly get into it. I don't know if that's the first public hearing, in the public hearing as well. So just basically, you know, business model shifting during COVID and trying to adapt to that. But, you know, if they have to keep it as it is, I think they would still do that. Yes.
Okay, thank you, Amy.
If you're all comfortable, I think let's hold this until after the public hearing and see where we, we stand. So next up, we will move into the public hearings. First, we have a public hearing to consider an application for a new entertainment license for Theater Workshop of Nantucket, stage plays to be held at thirty-nine Bartlett Farm Road, Bartlett Farm, June fifteenth through August twenty-second, twenty-twenty-one. To you, Amy.
I'm muted. Yes, so we are requesting here an entered, a temporary entertainment permit license for the season for the Theater Workshop of Nantucket. Let me, I will, yeah, I'm going to share my screen here with you for a minute, so that we can show the... There we go. Okay, let's move down to, to, to. We're going to move down. So this Theater Workshop has proposed, and we've been working with I'm gonna move down. So this theater workshop has proposed, and we've been working with them. Our event coordinator, I'll give her the credit here, Marina Devosnik has done an amazing job working with them uh and the theater workshop. At looking at some spaces and doing theater um outdoors this year. Uh, when we originally went to this and went to the state. The state said no, because it was not a traditional outdoor uh theater performance venue and wouldn't. Comply with the theater performance venue um requirements. And Marina and Kathy over at Health luckily don't accept no and work through it, and um. We're working through how this would work, and since it's going to be a setup for most of the summer and be a very solid type of performance venue. It does meet all those requirements. So this is in the Bartlett Farm area in the field that. Often we do have events here, tented events and things of that sort. So um it's a good a location for that that has been done in the past. There is sufficient parking, I think forty eight spaces for, they're looking for um up to a hundred and fifty people. At these events, again, this was done before the the most recent guidelines, so we'll update those as needed. Here, so this shows the seating area and the stage area as well. I will certainly let Bethany and Justin and those um explain more about their performances. So those performances um are going to be throughout the summer. They will end uh before at nine thirty PM before ten PM. Uh, we've included a schedule of events when they start rehearsals in June um and have performances um several days a week, July seventh to August the twenty first. I won't get into every single detail unless there's some questions here, but they have gone through uh the exhaustive process. It's been reviewed by fire department, health department and all uh respective departments for all the different setups here too. The lighting and parking and audience lighting system and, you know, thinking about sound projection. Making sure it's, you know, going away from um residents and things of that sort. So uh portable um toilets as needed. There will not be food service or food trucks um or beverages, so this is purely a entertainment license for the season. So. They have worked uh for several months on this um as well. They are doing some work as well on their theater and hope to be back into it in the fall. So this will just be a temporary plan. Again, cleanup plan signage, they have done. Everything required of this um thus far. And this is going to be a little bit closer detail of stage. They have a safety plan for all protocols as they exist and as they evolve too as well. With performance, obviously being outdoors uh will be a lot easier. If it rains, they won't have a performance that evening. Um, they'll just go on to the next night. Here as well, and the other thing I'd like to say, as you've seen in your package and probably have seen for the past few days. I have never received so many glowing letters of support for anything. Their supporters have been out in force every group. Comedy festivals, um different arts organizations are very much behind this, have worked very hard. I'll pull this down for right now. Um, and letters came in until. Probably twenty minutes ago. So again, incredible amount of support. You know, they've noticed all the neighbors, the butters, things of that sort, and you know, from our recommendation, they've done everything they need to do. It's a good location to carry that with parking and everything else. So it's um it's a it's a very positive proposal on our perspective. So I will. Let it to you for any questions.
This is a public hearing and anyone is welcome to speak on this. Any questions from the board? Beth- Bethany Oliver.
Hi, um, I I don't think there's much to add, Amy. That was a very thorough report. So I just want to say, you know, how very excited we are to be able to get back to our mission, and this has. Been an incredibly difficult year for theaters everywhere. And um we're just really grateful to the Bartletts and their generosity and 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 working with us on this, and I'll take any questions.
Okay, um, thank you, Bethany. Um, Michael Kopko had his hand up, and then I'll go to jump to you, Matt.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, members. I just wanted to speak briefly uh in support of this application. As uh Bethany mentioned. The theater and live performance sectors have been. Very shut down for a long time, and we've had to pivot and innovate. Uh, in order to try and figure out a way to come back. We've gotten a lot of support, I think. I'm sure that Theater Workshop has from folks who are very excited. About an activity that adds so much to their vacation experience on Nantucket. So I just wanted to uh speak i- in favor of it. Uh, they've done a great job. Innovating and and pivoting, and uh I look forward to seeing the shows there and hope you all will will approve.
Thank you. Matt?
Yeah, I was gonna make a motion to approve that it was complete and the work done was great.
Well, I've just got to close the public hearing before I take. Yes, John Che.
Sorry about that.
There you are. Go ahead.
I apologize, I was muted. No, I'll make it very brief. I just want to thank everyone. One thing that hasn't been mentioned and that we're so proud of is that this is our sixty fifth year. Of uh providing live theater for the island. So it's our anniversary, and it would be such a great thing, and it's part of the Bartletts. Generosity to invite us to share their open space out there. But, you know, we could tell you what we're gonna do, but what we're gonna do hopefully is just provide. You know, a great cultural experience for everybody who shows up. I want to thank Michael for his support and Bethany, who who you saw earlier. She's the. You know, executive director of the of the theater workshop, and so any details she's been working with, and I want to thank Dawn and. And Marina and everyone who's been supportive. And uh, thank you. I'll say goodbye.
Thank you, thank you, John. If there are no other hands, I will close the public hearing, and then I'll recognize you, Matt, for making that motion.
Make a motion to approve, please.
Is there a second? All those in favor by roll call. Melissa Murphy.
Aye.
Jason Bridges.
Aye.
Christie Ferentzela.
Aye.
Matt P.
Aye.
John Holgate, aye, that carries unanimously. Looking looking forward to seeing what you all do out there. Thank you. Next up, we have a public hearing to consider um an application for a mobile food unit for Lemon Press Market LLC DBA Lemon Press. Amy.
Yes, thank you very much, Madam Chair. So Lemon Press, as we just talked about on Main Street, is applying for a mobile food unit. Um, and I'll show you a picture just a moment to um describe that. They're going to operate a mobile food unit. They have approval and in agreement with Cisco Brewery to um service there for. I think three days a week at at this time. They have a commercial kitchen, obviously licensed commercial kitchen, which again is another requirement. They will have overnight parking at Cisco Brewery, which has been approved. Um, and have um other filed regulations that they need to follow. It's been approved by um health department. They'll need final. Inspections and such. I'll just real quick. Share screen for them and. Go here. And we will. Is going to be a food trailer like this that will be taken to the brewing left there. Again, as as with most mobile food. Units, if they have other locations, they need to get a. Property owner, excuse me, approval, um, share that with us as well, and there is no um. Service in the downtown area at any time, and if parked, it needs to be commercial parking and things of that sort. And other than that. Take any questions?
This is a public hearing. Are there any public questions or comments? Board questions or comments? I'm not seeing, oh, Matt, go ahead.
I'm I'm abstained on the next three.
Okay. Um. I'm not seeing any hands raised, so I'm, oh, Christie, before I close the public hearing.
All right, just to clarify, is this location only for the brewery or will it be authorized to be at other locations?
Yes, so um it is currently authorized to be at the brewery and with most mobile units, as they're often used um for catering. Can be used for a catering job at a private location. Um, and I mentioned if for any reason it was um parked in any area timed parking or anything of that sort, it requires. A street blocking permit for that for commercial vehicles. So um but they can't service or anything of that sort downtown or at any other. Location such as a beach um or a public location without property owner approval. They would have to come back to us and indicate that to be on the license.
I'm seeing no public hands raised. I'm going to close the public hearing. Is there a motion or a further discussion?
So moved. Second, but, yeah.
All those in favor, Melissa Murphy.
Aye.
Jason Bridges.
Aye.
Christie Ferentzela.
Aye.
John Holgate, aye, that carries unanimously four to zero with Matt P abstained. Uh, next up, we have a public hearing to consider an application for alteration of premises of seasonal all alcoholic beverage restaurant license for Lemon Press as well. And this includes the need for a determination that it's not detrimental to spiritual activities. The churches in the area.
Correct. Thank you. And as you mentioned, this is an alteration of a current liquor license for Lemon Press, which is located. At forty one Main Street. Um, they are applying for amendment to include the upstairs premises of the location at forty one Main Street. For the past few years, it has been um another business, separate business, but prior to that in the years before when this was. Licensed as a restaurant for other licensees, that location was included. So it's restoring the original. Setup of that building. So it was previously licensed for this building, and they have the opportunity to lease it and include it. And uh it would add, let me see, it's forty eight seats um that it would add to the location. Um, and there's no other additional request for um any live music or things of that sort. It's just the addition of the space. And it is attached and through the um staircase there too as well. So there's no, I don't think any great um alterations being made to the building. Um, and again, once they do the setup, they will require final inspections to be issued a final license.
Public hearing, um, Christie.
Thank you. Do applications go through the fire department um to review for safety or any concerns in that aspect?
Yes, yes, generally do. Um, and they would need uh inspection and approval from the building department. Um, and in this case, there wasn't any major construction, so there was no permits needed for that. They're just able to add the space through um the landlord there uh when the business leaving. So. It's a little bit less uh in this case, but generally, yes, that they all have to sign off before any final license um is issued.
Jenny Denzey.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you. My name is Jenny Denzey, and I am the owner of Eperne Wine and Spirits. And I sent a letter uh this afternoon to everyone on the board. I just wanted everyone to um consider, I know there are a lot of alcohol. Licenses that are coming up for uh something tonight, but just to think about this downtown area. And the effect of all of these things um and how they relate to each other. I know that all of the licenses are separate. And they all have their own story or history. But I just want you to really think about the effects of one item and how it affects something else. And what we can do for the best for the downtown area and for the businesses that are established. So this is, as Amy said, a business that's already been established that um had the upstairs. And this is great, you know, it's another forty eight seats, you know, but keep this in mind as we move forward to. The other alcohol licenses for, um, and I can raise my hand again then. But I just want you all to really think about the overall picture of the next several items and. And what you're deciding with each item and how it does relate together. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, are there any other public comments? Are there any other board questions? I'm going to close the public hearing. Is there a motion?
Push to approve.
Can you just, that it's not detrimental? To the spiritual activities?
Please add that to the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Christie. Um, all those in favor by roll call. Melissa Murphy.
Aye.
Jason Bridges.
Aye.
Christie Ferentzela.
Aye.
John Holgate, aye, that carries unanimously four to zero. Um, next up, we have, we are going to open a public hearing to consider. An application for a new annual wine and malt beverages package store license for Pizza Jamale. LLC DBA Pizza Jamale Andrea Sol- Solomeo manager for premises located at two East Chestnut Street. Request for determination that the premises licensed cell alcoholic beverages is not detrimental to spiritual activities of a church pursuant to section sixteen C of MGL, chapter one thirty eight. Amy.
Me again. Okay. So for this license, though, we briefly touched on this earlier with the surrender, is for Pizzeria Jamale at two East Chestnut Street. It has held a um. Annual wine and malt beverages with cordials um restaurant license um since twenty nineteen at that location. It's obviously a very. Small location. Um, I believe it's twelve seats uh currently. They have requested, and I'll pull over in a minute so we can look at some pictures and some uh layouts. Have requested to move to be an off premise, what we know as a package store license. There is no, as I mentioned, no direct transfer or switch over in the liquor license world, so they would have to surrender this license. To go for uh the additional license. Uh, I'm gonna share my screen real quick for this. And. Quick, let's pull up here. So just a couple of. Hey, what is it? Couple pictures, basically what they're asking for, and this is within their location right now. Can you see this picture of a cooler? Okay, cause it, no, you know what? It pulled off my screen.
No, it's 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 the packet.
Okay, there we go. Can you see it now? No. Man, I am having a day.
We could see that, Amy.
Sorry, it's been a long one. I had to change computers. Okay, so I have some photos here of the current indoors. Fortunately, they're using some of it as storage, so. Doesn't look as pretty, but this is what they're looking to do is to move to a full takeout because of the pandemic. And again, Taylor's on here. Uh, in a minute can certainly explain their situation, are looking to move towards um this takeout menu. A model that they've had. They've sold meal kits and other things like that, so it'd be a somewhat of. Some for Italian food, different things of that sort. I don't want to say grocery, but having some of those items for sale. Having some beer and wine as well, like this for sale for to-go orders. Um, there would be no seating. It would be purely a package store. So that is a request there, right? Wrong one. Right now, it's just um small seating in the area, bench seating. That would all be removed um to put in the liquor application. Looks good. But that's kind of what the setup is here now. I'm going to stop share some having issues. I don't know, Erica, if you can, could you possibly share the? The this application and the annual quota. Information.
Hold on one sec.
Sure. So I want to discuss um what this means and what the quota that we initially talked about. With annual licenses, again, we have a quota system based on the census. That is still based on the twenty ten census. Again, I don't know what the update is or when we're going to be getting that update. That may or may not uh in increments of five thousand in the population would increase the, thank you so much. Would increase the quota. As you see here now. Based on the population of ten thousand, we have, and again, annuals based their quotas. One section for beer and wine, one section for all alcohol, as opposed to the seasonals that just do seasonals. They don't, they don't split it out. So right now, um with our quota for all alcohol stores. We have two over. We can't give any more of those out. Uh, until we get rid of or lose three of those. So we're two over our quota in that area. For this category of wine and malt package store license, we have one left. We have the four current ones right there. We have a total of five to give it out, so this would be the absolute last annual if given out. Those are all the the ones that are are active. Annie's is involved in a possible transfer right now. Um, and then the others are active there as well. So I, we can probably stop the share. I think that's all I needed to share right now. Thank you. I will stop there and see what questions you have as far as this application.
Melissa.
Thank you so much, Don. Um, is.
Thank you so much, Don. Um, is the, the knowing what we know now about things, occupancy and things, I know this was just two days ago, starting to change for COVID. Will that remain their model or would they like to, are they? Are the seating working regardless of COVID, not working regardless of COVID? Um, one concern I have is making a change and um, and I think right now with their takeout, they can still give out wine and beer because of the COVID rules, right? How long would those stay in place? Is that through the season?
Uh, if I can answer that, Madam Chair, then Taylor can respond to the business model. So uh, currently, um, the state did allow for um, these on-premise restaurant licenses to sell um, with to-go orders, alcohol with to-go orders. Originally, the end date was February twenty-eighth, I believe, or until the end of the state of emergency, and that's how the state has it worded. So whenever that tends to be um, is the end unless they make any adjustments on prior to that. So it is still in effect um, until that time. And if I may, if we can ask Taylor to uh, respond to the questions about the business.
Yes, go ahead, Taylor.
Uh, thank you, everybody. Um, I think Amy, you know, and this is kind of going to Melissa's question and Amy touched on it, and certainly, I think the pandemic led us into the current direction that we're, that we're in. Um, and it's certainly something that we've adapted to and, you know, tried our best to thrive within. Um, additionally, though, it kind of also sh- shined a spotlight on how we should be operating our business. Um, the indoor dining aspect was what was a nice addition, but yet it didn't really complement the business in the way that we thought it would. You know, we've, we have two other, two other full-service restaurants. Um, and you know, while we love dine-in service and and we love to find any aspects of both of those, um, Pizzeria Jamelle in particular, just the volume of takeout business that we're doing there in particular um, lends itself better to the takeout model that we're doing. It also allows, we wouldn't be able to do the pasta kits and the things that we, that we did all throughout this entire year. Um, while also trying to have, provide service for people indoors at, in that aspect, making drinks and and all those kinds of things. Um, you know, so, so we kind of, we, yes, it was because of the pandemic, but also this then led us into what ended up making sense as a business as a whole. Um, and, and kind of to to speak to the previous commentary that happened on the last one, um, certainly, we understand that, you know, we are amongst many downtown establishments that are, that are now offering or trying to offer um, retail beverage service. Um, I think, you know, w- we certainly specifically want to do wine and beer. Um, and within that range, where we're certainly focusing on specific wine and beer that, you know, craft beers, also natural biodynamic, all these kind of very low, you know, um, low price point, just kind of unique, very um, curated selection of beer. We're not trying to offer twelve packs of Bud Light and 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 the, and the like. It's more a compliment to over everything.
Amy?
If I may, um, I want to review one more thing, you know, as we get into these liquor license things, so to usually review the process of uh, determining um, a vote on this, if I may, um, real quickly so that we get that out of the way. It is. Okay, as we have in your package, just to reiterate as far as the process uh, for determining a liquor license here, and I'm going to go over uh, quickly some of the distances. I know that's been brought up, so if it gets brought up again, when determining um, a new liquor license, um, there are the six determinations uh, you need to discuss if there is approval or denial. Um, the ABCC prefer findings based on, one, the appropriateness of a liquor license at a particular location. Um, again, we've mentioned this is the current section twelve. Uh, we'll look at the map again for the existing locations nearby and the number of existing dispensaries in the town. Um, we went over the uh, package stores that we currently have. Again, the package stores in the immediate vicinity. Um, in the downtown core district being current vintage Murray's and um, Harpoon Liquors there. Uh, we have the distances and then on the periphery there being Eperne and Hatches. Um, the views of the inhabitants of locality and which license is sought. We have not received any written comments. Again, we'll listen to public comments this evening. Um, also, traffic noise size typically applies to new location. Again, this is in the downtown district and is an existing location for an on-premise. Uh, the sort of operation that carries the license, and again, the reputation of the applicant. Um, that is, is um, Taylor and his crew um, are, have run a very good business. We've never had any issues there. They also are involved with Ventuno and um, restaurant over VMR over at Grayden House, so um, the reputation is stellar there. There's no issues there. Um, background discussion here for these licenses, not only for this application, um, but it's important to point out for um, the others as well in this location as far as history of any denials in the location, as I included in the packet. Uh, the last application in this area um, on Center Street uh, was in twenty fifteen. It was at twenty-nine Center Street. That application for an off-premise license, a package store license was denied. Uh, I included in here the minutes from that meeting, uh, basically because that area is already well-served by package stores within walking distance. Um, so again, it's just important to remember when making those decisions. Um, again, these points that I just pointed out, um, if it came to anything, you need to be able to point to one of those for your decision. And I will stop that share now. Any questions?
Thank you, Amy. I do have, um, oh, Kristy, go ahead, and then I have Suzanne Mitten, Mitten is on, has her hand raised?
Thank you. Uh, this might be a question for Town Council and John. Um, with having two other entities, is, are they, um, does ABCC have any regulations against having um, a pouring license and also um, a package store?
John?
Yeah, yes, thank you. Um, Amy, did you want to um, respond first to that?
I'll probably look to you to make sure I'm saying the right thing, but
Right.
Um, they, especially again, like I said, this is such a small location. I know there's instances where there's a pouring license and a off-premise retail, a package store in the same building or location, but with a very distinct separation. Um, this is so small, there's, there's no way um, there would be an ability for a separation.
Right. I think you had mentioned that earlier in the, in the discussion, and I certainly agree with that. There does have to be that separation line. Um, and if it's not feasible in this particular location in the ABCC, I don't think would approve it.
Yeah, correct.
Okay, um, I'm going to go to Suzanne.
Can you hear me?
Yes, good evening.
Good evening. Thank you so much for taking my comment. Um, I just wanted to say that um, I spoke out on, I submitted a public comment for another license, but I didn't realize that the Pizzeria Jamelle was similar and my statement would be the same, that I really feel the downtown is saturated with retail um, wine, beer and other alcohol and feel that um, no, nothing against Pizzeria Jamelle, but I, I just feel like it's too saturated down there. You can measure the distance between um, the other retail outlets and feet. So I just don't really find it necessary to have more retail outlets available to the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Jenny Denzey?
Hello, everyone. Amy, my question is, how does it work in Massachusetts to be takeout? And you're a food establishment, but yet you have a to-go license. So it's different than being a market because you're a restaurant. How does that work?
It's how Fresh operates, right?
Hmm, um, if, if I may, Madam Chair, um, so there's differences depending on um, seating, if they're common vicular. Um, but basically, it's, you know, the liquor is uh, opened and consumed by the customer off the premise. Um, as opposed to an on-premise. Some, some have a common vicular because they serve food and have some seating, but um, all alcohol is to go. So I don't know if that answers that, but it's just the license itself.
The Fresh is a, is a good example, so thank you.
Okay.
Um, so that, that makes sense. I just want to reiterate what Amy said, you know, this would be based on the current census, the population number, the last license of this type available. And for the board to consider, you know, is it in the best interest to grant this license in the downtown area versus if something were to come up and it be in a different area that isn't as served and the needs aren't met in another area. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, this is a public hearing. Are there any further public comments? Um, board questions of anyone before I close the public hearing? Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing and then open it to board discussion or emotion. Melissa?
Um, well, I really appreciate um, the, the model change and um, I, I really appreciate this business. I am not in support of a package license at this location. I do think um, customers' needs can be served um, very close by, so um, I would not be in support of moving forward on this.
Kristy?
Thank you. I, I feel very similar to Melissa. It's something that I feel like we don't have a set policy on liquor licenses per se, um, kind of in and so in trying to keep a policy, what we've done in the past is we denied the twenty-nine Center Street, and so you know, following that policy line, I wouldn't see why we wouldn't, why we would want to approve this when um, twenty-nine Center Street was denied.
Jason?
This is a tough one. As I, you know, I look at reputation and how well the other, you know, restaurants are ran um, of, of the owners, that always make, believes, you know, helps me understand that they're going to do a, a good job of being responsible. When I look at only one left, that's tough. Um, then I, they already have a license, so they can do it, and at least this year, they can still do takeout. And if things change, I know I've, I've heard some people say, you know, I just, just take it easy this year, let's get through COVID and then look at any more licenses or or changing it in the census. And so that would be advantageous for us to either deny it or take no action. Um, but if we're going to deny it, I wanted to make sure that we're, we're doing it, you know, is it location, is it um, the type of operation, right? Cause Amy, we have to, we have to land on one of those.
Correct. Um, that would be correct. And um, you know, honestly, again, like you mentioned, um, it's, it's not about the applicant's reputation, certainly is a very good business. I would look to your previous decision in twenty fifteen that talks about that the area is already well-served um, with similar type of um, package stores. Um, which would definitely be one of the things, the number of existing dispensaries in the town, um, the appropriateness is at a particular location, so that's uh, probably where I think you're headed.
Location.
Correct. And the, and the, and the number of existing dispensaries in that location, uh, which is, is shown by those distances in, in that map, so yes.
I was, I was actually on that board in two thousand fifteen when, when we made that vote and um, I don't think that things have changed very dramatically in terms of the reasoning that came about then. Um, and I mean, I, I love this business and I love all of the things that you all are doing. I think you do have a great reputation. Um, but we are, we have one annual wine and malt left. We're two over on all alcohol, which also encompasses wine and malt. And I know that in the past, we've gone, we, we've been worried about, you know, maybe a location that's not served within walking distance of not having a license available. Like Jason said, the census could change that. Um, they can operate this summer under the same model, so I I'm not, I'm not going to be able to vote for this tonight. Melissa?
I'd like to make a motion to deny the application based on the location of the premise.
Second? Do you need any more than that, Amy? I think we should um, make, have the decision be very similar to the decision written in two thousand fifteen. So um, all of the same points are valid.
In, indicate the number of existing dispensaries um, in the
Okay, um, all those in favor by role call? Mine?
Oh, sorry, Amy, my internet's a little bit bad today.
Did, did you not hear me?
No, I, I, I didn't. Go ahead.
Okay, I was saying that, yes, similar to um, mention the uh, due to the, the um, large number of existing dispensaries um, in the location in that neighborhood, uh, and that neighborhood is certainly well-served by the existing number that you have.
Okay, all those in favor by role call, Melissa Murphy?
Aye.
Jason Bridges?
Aye.
Kristy Ferentzela?
Aye.
Don Holgate, aye? Yes, Amy?
If I may, it may follow up with that, with, with that decision and with Taylor is that um, with that denial, we'll take that um, issue a denial letter um, to the applicant with which they have, I believe, five business days to um, request an appeal with the ABCC, so he has that ability to do so. That will be outlined in the letter that will be delivered to him following this.
Okay, and um, in regard to their other application, did they want to withdraw that this evening? Their surrender?
Yes, please.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, next up, we have um, a public hearing to consider an application for a new seasonal wine and malt beverages package store license for K and K Anderson LLC DBA Born and Bread Nantucket Kimberly Anderson manager for premises located at thirty-five Center Street. Request for determination that the premises licensed to sell alcohol beverages is not detrimental to the spiritual activities of a church. Amy?
Okay, thank you. Yes, so give me only one second here, I need to catch up. Um, so this application, similar to what we just heard, but in the seasonal category due to, obviously with the other application, um, uh, we asked that they apply for the seasonal. They did actually originally ask for an annual. Um, thank you. Um, thank you. So this is for Born and Bread Nantucket, which is at thirty-five Center Street, um, which they've been there since twenty nineteen. Um, which they serve, um, they have to go, um, and some tables there too as well, uh, takeout as well with pastries and sandwiches and some, you know, um, specific grocery items there as well, uh, very nice establishments. There, again, we have the same considerations here in the seasonal area. If we go up um, quickly, Erica, to the um, quota. Again, there, we can even do that. Um, as we just discussed and voted on, the quota for seasonal um, package stores uh, based on the forty-five thousand, that comes to nine uh, licenses. We currently have seven that are active licenses, allowing for two additional licenses. Um, the list there of um, local licenses, again, this is in the very same vicinity uh, of the previous applicant there. So um, we have Harpoon Fresh Liquors, um, close by is the seasonal and then um, current vintage and then Murray's, which is an annual Eperne and Hatches on the perimeter as well as far as those that are in close proximity. Um, and I'll show you here the map that has the package stores, um, as I just indicated in the core and where they are located. Um, and just for full disclosure too, is not only do we have the previous application, we have this application, I also have one pending for the same neighborhood for this particular license, so um, to discuss this in the big picture here. Um, I don't know if I have to go over just quickly again, as we discussed in the last hearing, uh, the things to determine the appropriateness uh, in a particular location. This location particularly has not been a location, a location for a liquor license previously. Um, again, the number of existing package store licenses uh, which we just reviewed in the immediate vicinity, again, uh, the same as the last applicant that I just mentioned. Uh, views of inhabitants of the locality and which Views of inhabitants of locality which licenses sought. We did receive one letter, um, from a neighboring business in favor, uh, in supportive of this business, uh, getting a license. Traffic noise and size. Again, this is in the downtown core district. The sort of operation of the license and the reputation of the applicant, a very good applicant. Once again, a great business, a great applicant that also, um, has interest in managing the afterhouse, which is on Broad Street, which is an on-premise license as well. Um, and again, as we reviewed earlier, the decision in 2015, which was, um, down the street from this uh, for a similar license that was denied. And I will leave it to, for questions and discussion with the applicant.
Kevin Anderson, my, my, hi.
Hi. Uh, yeah, I guess I was waiting for questions, but I'm, I'm happy to address both concerns. Uh, I feel that, first of all, uh, I'm kinda happy Lemon Press got brought up. If we'd look at what happened with the Lemon Press building on 29th Center Street, uh, since the denial of that, uh, application, uh, it's gotten bought by a large developer and turning into a large developer on island. And now they have control all of Center Street from India to Chestnut Street. No longer any great knickknack stores there. Uh, we lost a great restaurant from that building. The anchor tenant, you know, didn't think it was feasible to continue operations within that building. And since then, the, the landlord sold it. And, uh, I don't know if you've been down Center Street recently, but it's a huge construction project right now, turning into a large hotel. Uh, somebody's gotta be there to service guests. And I think to Jenny's point, uh, exactly, we have to, the actions that we take tonight are gonna have an effect. You know, a little different in what's, the way she's going, but, uh, I think that the demand is there. I see it every day from our customers. They're asking us for it. Uh, and, you know, I think if, if we're granted this, this extra avenue to, to open up a new, uh, local offerings to people, which is what we, what we concentrate on at, at Born and Bread. Uh, I, I think that, you know, it's, I think the, it's a prima facie case, people coming twice in five years for it, I think. So like I said, I'm, I'm happy to kind of discuss that further and then take any other questions you might have.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak? Sarah Ellis?
I'm so sorry. Um, I just think that the demand for alcohol. Okay. Um, I just think there's gonna be an eternal demand for alcohol in Nantucket. And I just feel that, uh, we have so many places that serve and Born and Bread is such an extraordinary business, that I think that they really offer a lot more to the community than alcohol. That's all.
Thank you, Sarah. Are there any other public comments this evening? Any questions from the board of the applicant? Okay, I'm gonna close the public hearing and go to board discussion or a vote. Melissa?
On, um, I, I feel like, um, I can't support this and have denied Pizzeria Jamelle for all the same reasons. I think the location, um, does not warrant the necessity. Um, I also feel that, um, a bakery that has such a great selection and I agree, Amy, that the applicant is doing a stellar job managing that business. I'm not sure what the value add is of alcohol in that neighborhood, um, other than monetary gain, which I understand from a business perspective, but, um, I can't support this application.
Um, I'm not seeing any other board hands raised. Um, I would agree with everything that Melissa just said. Does someone want to make a motion?
I'll make that motion to deny the application, um, again, based on location and whatever additional items are necessary to add to the motion, um, denial.
Second? Okay, all those in favor by roll call? Melissa Murphy?
Aye.
Jason Bridges?
Aye.
Kristy Ferantella?
Aye.
Don Holgate, aye. That carries unanimously.
I, I should follow up, uh, as similar as I did the last time, that, um, we will put this together, issue the letter, denial letter to Mr. Anderson and, uh, explain the options for appeal to the ABCC.
Thank you. Um, thank you, Kevin Anderson, for being here and for, um, the job you're doing in your business. It's great for the community. Um, next up, we have a, um, a public hearing to consider applications for LH Manager Northeast LLC DBA Far Away Hotel for premises located at 11 India Street. They're asking for A, a new common vicular license with annual all alcoholic beverages in holder license and B, a new entertainment license. Amy?
Thank you. Thank you so much. And, uh, I'll ask Erica if she can share this one for me too as well. Probably be a little easier. So this application again is a location for a liquor license. It is, um, technically 11 India Street, but 11 India Street and then covering, um, Center Street location. Thank you. Uh, applications for common vicular, which is food service and on-premise service of food with an annual all alcoholic beverages in holder license, uh, and a non-live entertainment license. Uh, the request is for these licenses for room service for 58 hotel rooms and on-premise consumption being a restaurant for 145 seat indoor restaurant and also with covered patio seating. Um, and again, we, uh, includes a non-live entertainment license for recorded background music. And I'll go over quickly, um, some of the special permit requirements as far as times and noise and things of that sort. We'll move down here. Great. Thank you. Um, so I attached the special permit for the full ruling on the property. We pulled out some things as far as noise and things for the entertainment license, uh, being no exterior televisions, uh, within the outdoor restaurant bar patio. It states the hours they may serve breakfast, lunch and dinner to the public, uh, with permitted hours of operations for interior being daily 7:00 AM to 1:00 AM approximate service, uh, for breakfast, lunch, uh, and dinner listed there with bar closing at 1:00 AM, uh, and for exterior seats being daily 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM. With a limit there, there shall be no food or beverage service to customers in exterior seats between 10:00 PM and 7:00 AM. Again, they have room service. I made a comment that alcohol service cannot be printed until 8:00 AM on Monday and 11:00 AM on Sunday. So just a little bit edit there on those rules. Additionally, no loud music or other noise violating, uh, chapter 101 of the code or any provisions of the law. Um, after 10:00 PM, television stereos and the like shall be operated to not be audible upon any adjacent property. Um, there should be no music amplified or otherwise outside of the locusts between 9:00 PM and 7:00 AM. Hotel and restaurant should be air-conditioned. Doors and windows, uh, public areas, uh, shall remain closed to minimize impact of sound of any music, uh, within the interior of the restaurant uh, and to prevent any disturbance to adjacent property. So that's just the basic, um, requirements there as it relates to the liquor, uh, and entertainment licenses. Again, the same provisions apply when determining, uh, the appropriateness of the liquor license at this location. This hotel is in the downtown historic district, um, obviously within walking distance of the majority of restaurants, shops and transportation for the island. Um, there has not been a liquor license, uh, in this location, as was mentioned in the previous hearing. Um, it was several different businesses. It was the restaurant with the BYOB. And this was actually the location of the denied off-premise license that we just discussed in previous uh, applications on Center Street. It's just part of the, the main property here too. So that is a similar location. Um, we currently have in addition to those package stores, um, in town and across the island, 84 on-premise restaurant clubs in, in holder licenses, um, in that area as well. Um, I have not received any written, um, comments as well from this. Um, again, this operator. So as far as operation that carries a license, reputation of the applicant locally, um, we have not, uh, worked with this group as well, but, um, everything else is, is up to par in the application for that as well. Uh, so I think we can probably unshare that and see if there's any questions.
Um, are there any comments that the applicant would like to make or any members of the public are welcome to raise their hand at this time?
Madam Chair, could I, my name's Dennis Quilty. I'm the attorney representing the applicant. If I
Go ahead, Dennis.
Thank you very much. Uh, first of all, thank you, Madam Chair, members of board for having us tonight. Evan Bailey, who's the proposed manager of record is with us as well. Evan Bailey?
Yep.
Excuse me. Here he is. Uh, we would like to just make, uh, a, uh, a comment that, of course, this as opposed to the other license, which may have been applied for here as an on-premise. Inholders historically, I think around the Commonwealth, uh, given that the language on an innkeeper license speaks to serving travelers, strangers, believe it or not, and the public. Innkeeper licenses, I think, are, are generally more, um, appropriate to a, uh, an alcoholic beverages license, given that they, again, serve the traveling public and the inkeeping public, et cetera. Uh, it also provides, of course, a, uh, controlled environment for the actual service and, and consumption of the alcohol. Uh, the, uh, this would be in a restaurant setting only. We're very well aware of the, uh, restrictions placed on the, uh, on the site, uh, by the planning board. Uh, and, and I do wanna thank, uh, Ms. Baxter has been particularly helpful to us, uh, in making the application and making certain that we had everything in properly. Uh, but I would just suggest that as a, uh, uh, you know, the other thing the ABCC looks at very carefully on a new application is, is public need. And again, I think for purposes of an inholder, uh, given its ability again to supervise these guests on an almost 24-hour day basis, uh, and provide a service that I think the traveling public today expects and depends upon when, when traveling to a vacation resort such as Nantucket and staying in a hotel, which we hope will be a very, very high-end and special place on the island. I think the, again, the traveling public who, what inholder serves, I think in, it today expects to have alcoholic beverage service with food. Uh, and, and I think that does provide the, the public need that would be required, um, you know, to, to make a determination in this respect. And I would add that I think the public need is also addressed by the 10 or so page, um, a decision of the Nantucket Planning Board, which, um, provided for the establishment of this, uh, uh, you know, the, the, the re-establishment, if you will, of this property, uh, which for many years, of course, it was the Roberts Collection. So we, 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 we think and hope as we, uh, appear before you tonight, that we have followed the guidance of the planning board. And will, of course, adhere to all of the restrictions in that decision and, and, and restrictions that this board, uh, places on the applicant. Again, we would, uh, just ask for your consideration. We think it will be a fine, um, addition to the island and to the, uh, to the traveling public and to, you know, the, uh, seasonal and, and annual visitors that Nantucket is so famous for. And Evan is, uh, a, you know, a mass resident. He's a US citizen. He's quite familiar with the rules and regulations of local and state authorities. He has a long background in, uh, food service, having graduated from the Cornell University School, uh, as well as having run hotel operations, uh, you know, throughout the Commonwealth, um, for, uh, um, many years. So we think his, uh, is, um, um, abilities are, you know, evident, but certainly we're here for any, uh, to answer any questions you might have. And I thank you for your time. I know you've had a long night.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the board? Any questions from the public? Melissa?
Thank you, Don. I do have a question and, and I'm sorry, Mr. Quilty, if you said this and I missed it. Um, is, is rooms, is alcohol allowed to be part of room service in this type of license?
Yes, ma'am. An inholder license generally covers entirety of a premise and specifically would include the allowance for, for room service.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am.
Jason?
Just do our due diligence like we always do when we have these, uh, is it 78 seats that are outside? Or some of that not outside? It's covered and more of a porch? Just, we always have to think about noise levels and how that's gonna affect the neighborhood.
Actually, if I, I could read almost directly from, and again, thanks to Ms. Baxter, who, who pointed out a lot of these, uh, matters for us, the, uh, limitation is the restaurant will, will allow 80 interior seats and 60 exterior seats. So the, the 140 is comprised of two, you know, the, the two together. So 80 inside, 60 outside. And as you heard earlier, the, the 60 outside have particular restrictions on service times and music emanating and things of that nature, which we're very much, uh, uh, aware of and, and are fine with.
Are some of those 60 on the porches? I was trying to count them from the plan.
I, I, I have it as patio. I don't, Evan, can you answer that question?
Yeah, there are, uh, a handful of seats on, on a new covered porch, uh, 18 seats total. On a porch in between the interior restaurant and the courtyard.
That's 18 and the balance of the 60 would be on the courtyard itself.
Uh, correct.
Thank you. Kristy?
Thank you. A question for Amy, um, and actually have two now. Um, with the 80 in, indoor and 60 outdoor, could we put, um, a restriction on alcohol service outside and just allow inside? And thinking kind of future, I think with COVID, we obviously want as much outdoor dining as possible. And then the second question is, again, is it possible to split, um, the inholder license that they can serve their guests versus the restaurant license?
So, um, I, I did review some of this and some of these, you know, as far as the ability to modify applications, uh, in the final vote. And certainly there are some restrictions on hours and things of that sort, location. We talked about premises as far as modification, you know, we've done this before where, um, we, um, directed the service to be interior only and no exterior service because of proximate to a school or other things of that sort. So, um, getting, getting more complicated would be tough to do, um, certainly the location, but that would be tough with similar properties nearby with outdoor service. Just quickly, I just did a count too, in case this comes up, and I didn't include it as far as other inholder licenses on the eye, on the island. We have 100 liquor licenses total. 12 others are in holder. So we have 12, uh, inholder licenses across the island, um, not just downtown, but across the island. But certainly if you have some questions or some modifications, again, if we have any questions, you know, I would probably ask to continue the hearing if it, if it gets a little too complicated.
If I may just reply quickly, I, I mean, I can't speak for the entire ownership, but, uh, I, given COVID restrictions, which we think will apply at least, at least, uh, until August, I think it would be a serious blow to be unable to serve outdoor guests, given the restrictions of, you know, as you pointed out, time and service and no music and things of that nature. Just, uh, just a thought.
Are there any other public comments? Not, not seeing any. I'm gonna close the public hearing. And go to board discussion. Um, this seems, although I, I wish that they would have approached us earlier in the entire process of the construction here to, to talk some of the stuff over. This is completely consistent with the other, um, hotels and inns in, in the immediate vicinity. We have the Jared Kaufman right up on the corner and Hotel Pippa is even closer to this. And they, they both have, um, patio and interior. We have the Jared Kaufman right up on the corner and Hotel Pippa is even closer to this and they, they both have patio and interior service. So I, I would say that, that it would be completely reasonable for the licenses to be consistent and appropriate. Jason?
I agree, Don. You know, it being an innkeeper kind of scenario, I mean, it's, you know, we always have to do our due diligence and thinking like, is it going to be rowdy and the noise outside? Because we're going to get the phone calls, right? We're, well, Amy's going to get them first, then she's going to send them to us and well, then Libby's going to get them, then she'll send them to us. But within inkeeping and all the rooms there, it's in everybody's best interest to, you know, have a great experience. So I think that'll help for the, that, the surrounding area. So I don't have any issue with it.
Kristy?
Thank you. This one has been a little bit of a tough one for me in the sense that we did deny license, liquor request in 2015 at this location. And so I know that it's a different type of request, but it still seemed to be that there's enough saturation in the market. Amy mentioned that there's 84 on premise or inholders in the downtown area nearby out of our 100 licenses. So a part of that also, I feel like goes with the number of existing dispensaries in town. And then the sort of operations, I think, even though the J C House is right next, next door, sorry, my dog. There is, it's not as large with 60 exterior seats. So I'm, I'm having trouble finding, I, I want to support this and I, and I want to see this succeed, but I'm having trouble. I'm wondering if there's any modifications that we might be able to put on. Again, I'm thinking more kind of a post-COVID, starting next year. That would make, make me feel a little bit more comfortable with this.
Now, Amy, you said the dining service ends at 10:00. Can, could we limit alcohol service outside at a certain time? And what do the other licenses in the area say? Sorry.
You know, it's okay.
Multiple question.
Yeah, and I believe that, that lends the special permit, that's outdoor patio, I believe, guys, right? Yeah, that's the patio reading. I'm just going to make sure I'm remembering that correctly.
Yeah, it was saying the patio was different for the dining service times.
So yeah, and that, and that I would say that we need to be consistent in a ruling with that. So service, and I believe they say food and beverage service. But I would think that it needs to be consistent with that across the board. As far as what's in the area, it's all sorts of different things. You certainly have restaurants in that area and a normal day that can serve liquor outdoors till 1:00 AM. So.
Court decision is limiting the outdoor service to 10:00.
Correct, correct.
Okay, so that's already somewhat covered in terms of noise issues. Libby?
I was just going to say that I believe the board can be more restrictive than the planning board, but not less.
Correct.
Okay. So I just, I don't know if that helps alleviate some of your worries, Kristy, with, with the noise factor and the number of outdoor seats.
If I may, I would just add, I think, one of the points that Mr. Bridges mentioned, the, there is a certain protection that the people that this place serves live there and, of course, are not going to be allowing loud noise and exuberant activities to take place outside their own bedroom windows. I mean, everybody in the building will have the same concerns. So I think it, it, it kind of self, self-regulates in a way that, that another place might not.
Thank, thank you, Dennis. We appreciate that. I'm just, I'm not going to take any more comments because I closed the public hearing. Does the board have further discussion or want to go to a motion?
I'm happy to make a motion to approve this. And I'm not sure, Kristy, were, were your concerns addressed in the conditions from the planning board? Or are there further conditions you'd rather see?
I, I'm just not comfortable with approving this, but if the rest of the board wants to, then it's up to you guys.
Okay, I'm, I'm happy to make a motion to approve it. I think that this is a, a new venture and it's a new way of us perceiving and seeing this neighborhood and how it's being redeveloped. And I think because it is a hotel and a restaurant within the hotel, I do take comfort in the fact that they're going to have to control noise. So I make a motion to approve.
And are we, just to be clear, are we approving A and B at the same time?
Hold please.
We didn't really talk extensively about the.
I felt like I was, yeah, I, I feel like I'm, I make, my motion is about the liquor license.
The way this is written, it's a public hearing that encompasses both. Should we, should we hold that motion? Or do you want to remove that motion and have any further discussion about entertainment?
Yes, please. I'll remove that motion.
I should have handled that a little bit more clearly.
Thanks, Don.
Amy, can I just go back to you on any entertainment questions? Or do you want to make a few comments on the entertainment before we go to a vote?
I do. I think the enter, the entertainment application that's here is for theater workshop and not theirs. Hold on, let me see. Oh, here it is. Like, oh, it's late. What am I seeing? Okay, no. So again, the limitations or the guidelines that I mentioned earlier for the hotel set up by the planning board exists for this entertainment license. And again, you know what? It's, this is the, it's not the right one. Hold on, I'm going to have to pull it out because the one in the package says theater workshop. So bear with me real quick.
It's all of the outdoor entertainment ending at 10:00. And I mean, I saw all the windows need to be closed and it's air conditioned so that there won't be any noise coming out from inside.
Here it is.
It seems consistent with what we normally look for.
Right, correct. Yeah, that's the common vehicle. So I'm going to read from this. It's just a background level. That's the common vehicle application, Erica. So you can pull that out. I'll just read from here. It's a level one background, non, you know, speaker amplified, just through the house system only. It's not live bands. It's just purely background, pre-recorded music per conditions of the special permit file. It would be interior and exterior, I believe, has to end at 9:00 PM. No exterior televisions, again, within the outdoor restaurant and bar patio, no loud music or other noise from, in effect, after 10:00 PM, television stereos and like shall be operated so as not to be audible outside of the property or adjacent properties. No music amplified or otherwise outside of the locus between 9:00 PM and 7:00 AM. Again, it shall be air conditions with the doors and windows closed to minimize impact of the sound of amplified music. So it's just really a background music with that limitation on outdoors after 9:00 PM and with 10:00 PM televisions and stereos not to be audible outside the property.
Okay, and there's no televisions outside anyway, which I really appreciate that. The board did that with all of the other complaints we got. And and if they ever wanted live music, they would just have to apply for a different licensing for an event or something like that. Okay.
Correct.
Jason, do you have a question?
Yeah, thank you for the, the entertainment music breakdown. That makes sense. Can you remind, just remind me, I've been doing this for a little bit, what is the COVID restrictions on, on everything? Is that more limiting? Just remind me of where they can do service till 11:30 and 12:00 or, or whatever we pass.
Well, yeah, so the limitations we put on entertainment really were just for the outdoor spaces that were added as far as street and sidewalk dining. So none of those specific limitations would, would, would come in. It would just be on performance guidelines that are, right now, you can't have singing indoors, which they wouldn't have because it's live music. So nothing would really affect them because all of the COVID limitations are based on human beings transmitting the disease. So with pre-recorded music, there would be no COVID restrictions, extra restrictions on them.
So, Madam Chair, just to clarify, just to clarify again, so outside will be dining, beverage and food until 1:00 AM outside?
No.
No, 10:00 PM and nine, music stops.
Okay.
Yeah, indoors, indoors till 1:00 AM. Correct.
Okay, is the board comfortable now with, we are, we are approving liquor, victualers and entertainment in one motion?
I'm comfortable with that and I continue to make my motion to approve. Thank you.
Is there a second?
One second.
Can you include the determination?
Oh, yes, about that it's not detrimental to the spiritual activities of the churches in the area. Is that part of the motion? Melissa?
It is. Thank you.
Jason?
Yeah, that was my second.
All those in favor by roll call. Melissa Murphy?
Aye.
Kristy Ferentzela?
No.
Jason Bridges?
Aye.
Don Holgate, aye. That carries three to one. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much, board.
Thank you. Have a nice evening. Next up, we have a public hearing to consider a utility petition for Verizon New England. This is for Plan MH45 to push two inch steel conduit from pedestal, pad number 11, approximately 35 feet northerly across Low Beach Road to connect to customer place conduit at a point 140 westerly from Palm Street.
Yes, good evening. My name is Ross Billidoo, representing Verizon New England. How are you?
Hi, Ross. Thank you.
Like you said, we're just looking to place 35 feet of two inch conduit to cross from the southerly side of Low Beach Road to connect to some customer place condo, customer being US Coast Guard on the north side. This is needed for running some new fiber services to that installation they have down there.
Are there any board questions? This is also a public hearing. We have Matt back. And if, if anyone from the public wishes to speak, please raise your hand now. I'm not seeing any hands raised. I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing. Is there a motion or questions, comments? Matt?
Move approval? Second.
Okay, all those in favor by roll call. Melissa Murphy?
Aye.
Kristy Ferentzela?
Aye.
Jason Bridges?
Aye.
Matt Faye?
Aye.
Don Holgate, aye. That carries unanimously. Erica?
Can we make that approval based on the departmental comments?
Yes.
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 Say something. I want to apologize to Ross. I had a note here to ask to move you earlier and I, and I didn't read my note. I forgot to do it. So I'm sorry. You're with us.
Happy to be here.
Thanks, Ross. Have a good night.
Thank you for your time. Take care.
You too. I'll move on to the town managers report and turn it over to Libby.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So first off, we've got a review of the 2021 Annual Town Meeting. We've been having some internal discussions about the setup. As we all know, town meeting will, hopefully, weather permitting, will begin on Saturday, June 5th. It will be outdoors under tents at the Bacchus playing fields, off Bacchus Lane, behind the intermediate and elementary schools. We will not have a projection screen. We will have electronic voting and we've been working on all of the arrangements that need to be put into place in advance. So I would like to turn over just a general overview of the setup to the town clerk and a general overview of the procedural aspects that we expect to be in place to the town moderator. We are also working on a public informational session. We actually have scheduled one for Tuesday, May 18th, beginning at 5:00 PM, which will be simply an overview of how we expect town meeting will be run this year. And the town clerk and the moderator and I will all be there and the intent is to just take questions from people. And the finance committee has scheduled their own public informational session on Monday, May 24th, I believe it is, starting at 4:00 PM. And they are going to be reviewing any questions that the public or voters might have about their motions. And that was something that they tried out for the first time last year, although they never actually held it because we, of course, had to postpone town meeting last year because of COVID. So Nancy, would you mind taking us through the, the general idea of the setup?
Sure. Thank you, Libby, and good evening, everyone. So for just a, a general idea of the setup, as you all know, we're working with Maggie Stewart from Maggie Stewart Events to help with the total orchestration and logistics of the tents and just the entirety of the setup for this town meeting. And we've, the town, as you also know, has contracted with Nantucket Tent Company. And on the Bacchus Field, closest to the skate park, there's going to be four adjacent tents. And Maggie's working on an updated schematic because, as Libby said, we've just been having a lot of meetings with technology, the tents, all of us, where we're going to put the porta potties, parking, everything. So Maggie is working on that. And when she has that, of course, that will be shared with the public and all of you as the board. But generally, there's going to be 600 chairs socially distanced for voters under those tents. Maggie has worked on a way with the tent company to maximize that space and a lot of those seats will be in pairs of two for couples or people in the same household or whatnot. In addition to that, we're going to have, I believe it's 200 extra chairs on hand provided through the schools, racks of chairs in case we need some more if we have more people than that. Adjacent to the tented area will be a whole area for non-voters to come. And they will need to bring their own chairs, a beach chair or blanket or whatnot. As far as other safety protocols, we're going to have hand sanitizing stations at various locations at the entrance to the tents. We're going to have porta potties set up because it's, you know, too far of a distance to walk to the school buildings. The porta potties will likely be in the adjacent parking area of the skate park. We'll have sanitation stations for folks' hands near there. As we did last year for our scaled back town meeting, we will have either volunteers and or election workers on hand to sanitize the microphones after each use, after each person comes up to speak and make their comments. The public will need to bring their own lunches unless they choose to go off property and get their lunch. I believe the moderator said we'll likely do about a 45 minute lunch break. So folks will need to bring their own lunches, their own water for the day, sunscreen, hats, whatever they feel they might need. We're also really going to encourage reminding everybody to bring their warrant with them so that they can follow along as there'll be no screen, you know, maybe bring a pen if you want to take notes. And I just also wanted to, to put out the reminder because a couple, a couple of people have asked us through emails and things in the office, well, how can the town be having, you know, big town meeting with the gathering rules in the state? And I just wanted to remind anybody that might be listening that town meetings are exempt from those gathering rules because it's, you know, obviously the necessary business action and government of our towns and most towns in Massachusetts for that matter. So and also in terms of parking, Lieutenant McBicker in the police department are working on a parking plan. He's shared with our group a schematic today that we'll be discussing at our next meeting and working on. So there is going to be a parking plan and a traffic flow plan orchestrated by Lieutenant McBicker and the police department. And that will include providing handicap spots closer to the Bacchus Field itself. We will also be having, as you know, we'll be having the e-voting as we did for our last town meeting, which of course was only attended by, I believe, about 180 or so people. So we will have the same company and the same units again, option technologies. There will be check-in stations as there usually is for a check-in stations as there usually is for a town meeting, but obviously, it'll be out in the field and be under a tent, and it will folks will be directed when they come in, they'll be able to clearly see the tent where they'll go and check in and be handed a unit. And as we did at the last town meeting, we will have a practice session with the units at the beginning of the town meeting, so everybody can be comfortable using those devices, which are are very simple to use, and people did receive them very positively last year, but obviously, we're expecting a larger number of voters this year. And I think that's about all I've got right now. As I said, you know, and as Libby will talk about, we're gonna be doing a lot of outreach, the schematic of the the field will be shared with the public as well, so they can get an idea of what things are gonna look like. And if anybody has any questions, feel free to ask.
I'm not seeing any. Thanks, Libby.
Thank you very much, Nancy, and I really want to recognize Nancy and her staff, they have spent already, we're not even there yet, a massive amount of time on this, and we really appreciate it. Also, our event coordinator Maggie Stewart has done a fantastic job as well, we're glad we hired her. Just a quick sidebar on outreach, we're gonna, we're planning for some videos on the articles that are contingent upon ballot questions. Hopefully Nancy and Sarah will do videos of kind of overview of what we're gonna be going over tonight. E-news, Town Manager E-news will be featuring a sort of a town meeting special edition. We'll have some spots on the radio, hopefully, I'm gonna be going to Rotary in a couple weeks to review it there. We will have information on the website, of course, which there already is, and lots of social media outreach, and there's probably more that we haven't even that I didn't even jot down yet.
Did you mention May eighteen, Libby?
Yes, I did.
Okay.
So, but thank you for bringing it up again, in case people didn't catch it. We're having a public informational session for us to give an overview of what town meeting will be like this year, and then just to open it up to questions from people. That's Tuesday, May eighteenth, starting at five P.M., it will be on Zoom, it won't be live, but it will be something you can register to be an attendee on. Sarah, do you want to tell us about the procedural? Oh, sorry, Jason?
I had a question for Sarah, so go ahead.
Sure, a few procedural things. So I think this meeting is gonna be your basic nightmare. It's gonna be very much back to basics, so remember the days before we had kind of all the bells and whistles, the screen and all of that, but add in electronic voting, so that that will be a plus. I think the challenges, well, there are gonna be a lot of challenges, but I think if people prepare, we should be okay. You're gonna have to dress appropriately, and I have to think about this because it's gonna be January, so it could be super hot, it could be super cold, it could be windy, it could be all of those things at different times or all at once. So if you're coming at nine in the morning and we're going to go, I'm not sure how late, but we can't go too late because we don't have lights in this tent. So, you know, let's say I start at nine in the morning on Saturday, if it looks like we could possibly wrap it up in a day, you know, maybe we'd all agree to push it and stay until five-thirty, six, even six-thirty, but it's gonna start getting cold, I think, under the tent. And we'll start getting dark under the tent as well. Because because we won't have the screen, we don't have the technology for the screen, people are gonna have to bring their warrants, and when there are changes or amendments, they're going to have to write them in. Now, what that, or there's going to have to be a handout, so for small amendments like changing a word or inserting a small clause that someone could write in or correcting a number or changing a number, that's easy enough to just announce and have people write in. If it's, let's say there's an article that doesn't have a positive recommendation, so it doesn't have a positive motion printed in the warrant. If the main motion that's made on that article isn't significantly the same as what was published as the article itself in the warrant, it's gonna be very challenging for people to follow that motion, unless there there is a handout, so I'm going to be suggesting that anyone who wants to make a main motion on an article that doesn't have a positive recommendation, that they plan ahead, they get their information out, they get preferably, you know, we would have all of these motions in hand a couple of weeks before the meeting, that's aspirational, I understand. I think people are gonna have to bring like six hundred copies to the meeting. It's definitely gonna be challenging, I I just don't want to kid anyone about that.
John Georgio has his hand up.
Yeah, John. Oh, I think you're muted. I've always wanted to say that.
Madam Moderator, one suggestion I would make, which is not the tradition in Nantucket, of course, because you always have the nice book with all the motions written out, but if someone wants to make a positive motion that is the same as what's printed in the warrant, a motion to approve Article X as printed in the warrant is a perfectly fine motion.
Yes, that, and that's what we'll do, that's what we, that's what we used to do before we adopted this motion practice.
Yep.
And that's what we'll, we'll definitely do that. What I'm worried about is I've heard that there is an article that's reasonably controversial, where the sponsors are saying, well, we're gonna amend that before the meeting. Well, okay, that's great, how, we gotta work out how that's gonna happen and how we're gonna communicate that to the voters. That, that's, those are the ones that I'm worried about. I mean, where someone gets a negative recommendation, but they're perfectly happy with how their article is printed in the warrant, I totally agree with you, John, we can just say motion to approve Article, whatever is printed in the warrant. But when we start getting into, well, it's gonna be what it is in the warrant, but we're gonna take out this section, and we're gonna add in that section, and we're gonna amend this and change that, it's gonna get difficult, I think. And, you know, it's gonna be a long day, so I hope that people will bring patience along with everything else that they're having to bring with them. That's all I can say.
Ason?
So Sarah, we can't legally say amendments have to be in two weeks before, we can just highly suggest it and say it's it could be problematic and hard people understand if you bring in last minute, but we can't, is that right?
And I think experience has shown, Jason, that when people have tried in the past to bring a complicated motion to the floor that hasn't been vetted by the community and hasn't been out there, it hasn't fared well, pretty much across the board, the ones that I can think of. I mean, it's just, I mean, if you think about it, if you hand somebody a handout, it's two pages long of maybe legalese that somebody isn't used to reading, the instant reaction is gonna be to say no, I mean, it isn't gonna be like, oh, well, let's give this a shot. So we gotta, we're, you know, but that's incumbent upon the sponsors of the articles to do what they need to do to to get it passed. Matt?
Yeah, I was gonna, I was gonna say the same thing, pretty much, that it's up to the sponsors, up to the people with the amendments to get it out ahead of time into enough people, because if they don't, town meeting will get snarky about it and just table it, or, you know, or or vote it down.
Right. Yeah, absolutely. You know, the, I think the other thing we have to mention is, and and I could be, I could be wrong about this, but I think the walk from the parking lot's gonna be further. So just plan according to that as well. Wear comfortable shoes and warm clothes in layers.
John?
I would like to add to what to what Matt just said, and also for Sarah's edification, you know, the moderator has a tremendous amount of authority, as we all know, and and her job is to make sure that the voters are informed and know what they're voting on. And so the more direction you can give prior to town meeting, that anyone making a positive motion or with or without changes needs to have sufficient numbers of those, copies of those approved by the moderator in advance of town meeting. And if someone doesn't do that, and they come, they just show up and start spouting off changes to a motion, I think Sarah, it's up to her, but I think she would be, will be well within her authority to say no, that's you, you know, you haven't provided sufficient notice to the voters, and I'm not gonna allow it.
Right. Do you think six hundred copies is sufficient, by the way? I hate to kill that many trees, but
because there'll be couples there that will share them, you know, friends within a household.
Yeah, we, we there's a few things that we talked about in our group meetings that we sort of wanted to introduce to you all, that's one of them. There's a bit of a concern that, you know, as we know, the weather can be varying, and we don't certainly want six hundred copies of an amendment to be blowing all around the school fields, so people are gonna have to be the, again, the sponsors are gonna have more responsibility than perhaps they normally would indoors with regard to things like that. Sarah, do you want to mention the issue about the order?
Oh, right, I forgot about that. So it's, wait, this isn't, we haven't decided this yet, but it's possible that we will decide that we need to take articles out of order. There are some articles that maybe will go better together and should be grouped. It's also possible to put some articles that maybe have the most the bigger crowds, put them earlier so that we can get them out of the way. I mean, the goal is to get as much done on Saturday as we possibly can so that we don't have to go to Sunday. I know that Sunday is gonna be a really unpopular day to have a meeting. So I, A, I hope the weather's good, B, I hope we don't have to go to Sunday, and C, if we have to go to Sunday, I hope we can can go back to Sunday later in the day and not start so early, because I know that people have commitments to church and everything, so they want to do on Sunday morning.
If I could just add to that, and Sarah, thank you for bringing that part up, we've, we've sort of hashed out a bit, if town meeting is supposed to start on Saturday, if it is pouring rain or similar bad weather, the idea is to, the rain date is Sunday, and it would start at nine. If the weather is fine on Saturday, we proceed, but we don't get done, the idea is to go to Sunday, but starting at perhaps eleven. And hopefully, we just finish that day. If we don't, we're prepared to go to Monday, that would most likely start at three. But if we go beyond that, we've, we've got some issues.
Yeah. And Monday is really a problem because it's a workday, we can't, I don't know how late it stays light in June, but seven-thirty, but we're gonna be under a tent, so I can't believe it will be that light, it it's just not gonna be good.
John?
So one of, one of the things we need to think about is if on Friday the weather forecast is really, really horrible, there is a provision in the law now that allows the moderator to make a declaration of continuance in recess of town meeting after consulting with the Chair of the Select Board. I don't think we've ever done that, have we, Sarah?
We did that last year.
Oh, that's right, okay.
A couple of times.
Right, you're right, I forgot about that, but that would be, that would be a way to, and then you would get the word out on social media and through the radio stations that folks don't have to come on Saturday. It's being recessed until Sunday at nine A.M., and we could make that decision ahead of time, is my point.
Right.
And then we'll wake up Saturday morning, and it will be beautiful and sunny, despite the weather forecast.
I know.
It happens.
Right, because it's possible we could have a delayed start, too, that's another possibility.
Yeah.
I mean, how bad does it have to be to cancel it? I I assume we wouldn't do it if there was lightning, for example. And if it was torrentially downpouring, we probably wouldn't, but what if it was misty?
I have, I suspect that torrential downpour is gonna probably be an issue for the option technologies people.
Right, and for the field.
Yeah. The farmer's almanac says we're good.
Okay.
I hope they're right.
Let's go with that.
So we just wanted to give you all an update, see if you have any immediate questions, and we're continuing with our outreach and discussion about it.
Thank you.
I'll see if he has his hands up.
Please talk to all your, all the people and whoever you talk to, and make sure they get the word.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Sarah and Nancy for being here and sitting through the rest of our meeting.
Thank you.
Okay, next on Town Managers' Report, we've got fiscal twenty twenty-one third quarter budget reports, as I mentioned before, we will move Island Home to next week. We have solid waste and sewer to go over, and I think that the DPW Director is gonna take us through the solid waste third quarter budget, and then Sewer Director will take us through the sewer, and the Finance Director can help with any questions that might arise, most likely.
Thank you, Libby. So in our review for third quarter, this couple highlights regarding expenses, expenses are up largely due to the ongoing RFEI professional services, along with a few other items that we've seen. Revenues are I would say pretty substantially down, and a lot of this has to do with what we're seeing with the construction ongoing. We do believe that we're gonna see a fair rebound before the end of the fiscal year, but currently, we're looking at numbers with mixed excavation waste that are substantially down compared to last, this time last year, that are, I'd say, lagging somewhere in the neighborhood of almost a half a million dollars. Again, with all the active construction that's taking place currently, we believe that we'll see a reasonable rebound before the end of the fiscal year, and the Finance Director and myself continue to watch revenues. That said, we do have, we have, the Finance Office has submitted all of the landfill fees, those have been mailed out, collections have begun, and so we're starting to see some of that shortfall being recovered. We have, I mentioned the construction activity, we have a recent report that was completed by our consultant, George Aronson, delving into a little bit regarding the plastics and the impacts that some of the costs related to COVID have had on the Solid Waste Enterprise Fund. Right now, the plastics market, as well as the vendors inability to work through sorting of plastics has to date resulted in approximately a revenue shortfall of about fifty-five thousand, and that's, that's ongoing. Relatively small compared to the overall budget, but it is a factor that we're tracking as well. So I I think we I, I think we, we see out in the, in the town, there's lots of activity that we expect to bolster the enterprise in fourth quarter. Right now, obviously, we're lagging a little behind. And with that, I'm happy to take any questions. And I have a bunch of notes that I'd like to add to the end here, just to kind of give people a brief update of some other ongoing things that have taken place here in April that are a little subset of the solid waste enterprise activity.
Matt?
Yeah, Rob, the construction has been really pretty crazy. So have we lost some of that to other haulers, do you believe?
Matt, in most, thank you, Matt, Chair. What I'm, what I'm seeing a lot of is stockpiled materials, a lot of yes, there certainly is a lot of activity. There's a lot of new construction and there's a lot of materials that are currently stockpiled that are not moving to our facility quite yet. We still get a fair amount of C and D, but where we're really off right now, Matt, is with mixed excavation waste. And I do believe once those sites are buttoned up and closed up and finished with the site work, that we'll be seeing a lot of that.
Any other questions? Do you want to?
Sure.
Do your other items?
Just a couple of dates that are upcoming. We are, we're going to be closed as scheduled Memorial Day, 5:31, which is Monday. I want to give a real shout out to the folks who ran the litter derby this year, Leah and Graham. And also some real kudos to Waste Options, specifically Jason and Cedric, who really went above and beyond and supported that effort. The stats you may have seen, 50 teams participated this year islandwide, and they brought in 18 tons of litter. The first year, by contrast, was only 19 teams or 18 teams and three tons. And included in there were four full barrels, over 200 pounds of just nip bottles. Just as a follow up. I wanted to give everybody a reminder to please, this spring season, just continue to secure your load. We're seeing lots of plastic bags on the side of the road from construction activities and landscaping activities. So if we could, please, secure your load. That would be greatly appreciated. You may have seen recently, the DPW's extended the scale lane automatic road to better handle the traffic and queuing, especially in the morning time. We have new universal waste sheds paid for through a DEP grant, and that's for collection of bulbs and batteries. Let's see. We have, through COVID, you folks supported the introduction of litter drop, remote litter drop off areas. Those five locations have been hugely successful, and I want to say thank you for the support. Those will be removed this weekend as the clean team takes hold and continues their schedule through the summer. And they'll be returning, the remote litter drop off areas will be returning in the fall when the clean team steps aside for the winter. Lastly, I'm very excited about another effort that you supported, which is the textile collection events happening every third Sunday from eight till noon. We completed our third event most recently on the Sunday of the litter derby on the 18th. And I'm excited to report that 15.6 tons of clothing have been recovered. And instead of going into a landfill have been shipped off island earlier today to Salvation Army. And that is a straight up savings of $5,000, plus it's not going into a landfill. So thank you again for your, for support on that. And hazardous waste, last event on 410 was our largest participating event yet. We had over 250 participants. So we have a new vendor, and I don't know if it was a combination of just people cleaning up or cleaning out, but it was pretty tremendous. And we had a steady stream all day while we were open. Our next event is 6/12, June 12 for the hazardous waste. That's all I have. Thank you.
Melissa?
Thanks so much, Don. Through you to Rod. Rob, at what point or have you considered previously and made the determination it's not viable to extend hours, particularly on the weekends? I just heard anecdotally the other day, I think you were talking about, you know, how, how busy the facility is. I had friends visiting and they went to go drop a load off at eight o'clock in the morning on a Monday, and the cars were backed up 30 strong on Daticat Road. So and I, this is consistently, I'm hearing this throughout the community. Is, is there a point at which we start to look at revising hours of operations there?
Well, I will say I have visited this with the town manager anecdotally over time. I frankly am not familiar with another facility that receives waste that's open seven days a week. I think that is quite unique. I think the folks here really don't know how well they have it to have that kind of flexibility. But that being said, you know, there's certainly opportunities to take a look at this. We are going to summer hours soon, which is seven to three. So it's an earlier hour. But other than dealing with the, the strenuous hours that we have currently for, particularly for our vendor Waste Options, seven days a week. You know, there's, there's a pretty wide opening on this, as far as the availability to bring your waste to our facility.
Okay. Yeah, I think that there were probably people in the community that would probably beg to differ, I think, you know, particularly on Sundays in this time of year for a lot of folks who are working six days a week. Those hours can be really difficult to get to. And then the wait. And so I'm thinking about the amount of trash that was collected, which is really wonderful. But the increased trash that we're seeing dumped and trying to think creatively about how we can improve options for getting the waste to you. And I think you've been doing that. So it's just an idea. But thanks. We'll keep chewing on that stick.
Sure. I would just add to that, that we have made tremendous strides in moving people through our facility with, both with the changes all the way at the drop off area as well as through the parking lot and the reconfiguration of the traffic, as well as the addition of the scale lane. So the, the extension of the scale lane automatic road, I think, will, when it's fully implemented and utilized, will, will seek to, again, first and foremost, to try to get all traffic off of Maticat Road and into the facility rather than stacking, since there's only one way into Maticat and one way out of Maticat. It certainly would pose a problem for anyone that's any through traffic. So we are continuing to monitor that. And certainly will continue to seek to improve the facility where and when we can.
And, and that change has been noted and is fabulous. Thank you. I think it improves the flow and use of the facility tremendously. So thanks for that.
Sure.
Thank you, Rob. This might be time for two additional PSAs. In addition to the secure your load one that Rob made. Downtown trash barrels are not for household trash. And DPW does a great job getting that trash and sometimes going through it when it looks like trash barrels are continuously being used for household trash, and you will be contacted if it looks like that is happening and there is, you are subject to fines. That discussion about the landfill being open for extended hours has been going on as long as I've worked here. And people, I mean, I certainly understand where people think there, there's a need for that. But it is very unusual for a landfill operation like this to be open seven days a week. And unfortunately, we're pretty lucky as to what we can take to our landfill. So people should take a trip to one off island and see how it works there. We'll be quite thankful for how it works here. Any other questions about the landfill budget, sorry, solid waste budget? Okay, thank you for that, Rob. David? Oh, sorry. Okay, sorry. David Sewer?
Good evening, everyone. Yeah, we'll touch on some of the highlights. I know everyone's been here a while, so. Sewer permitting, to start with, we've already issued 495 permits to date. I just did another 11 while I've been sitting here waiting, so we're over 500 permits already. We did 434 last year and 270 the year before that. So we, we have been very busy out here. As you can see, our revenue is up for the third quarter over last year. Has to do a lot with the sewer fee, sewer user fees, and the permitting alone has just been really out straight. I can't say enough about how busy we've been out here. The, we're also going to see an increase in the revenue because of the cooperation and the collaboration between our office and downward Brian's and the assessors office downtown in being able to take a bunch of the sewer privilege fees that are being paid in full. It's been a substantial increase in that. So that has helped with the, the numbers. Our operating expenses were up 28% compared to last year, and the biggest piece of that is because of the Biscuit County retirement being posted in our, in our third quarter. And it's similar for the 20. The Biscuit County payment and the increase in the debt service all happened to hit the third quarter at once. So that's, you'll see an expense there. Some of our other expenses have been professional services, for sure. We have tried to do a lot of our own in-house repairs lately. We just finished another big one on Hooper Farm Road. So we're trying to cut back on being able to have to use outside services compared to what we can do in-house, and it's, it's working so far. The, the permit thing is probably about the, the biggest highlight for right now. I don't want to get too long-winded, which I tend to do, but it may be just easier to open up the questions if there's any, any questions or I can continue on.
Matt?
Oh, David, I want to praise you. The report you gave was really complete and really well done. And it hit the highlights of the, you know, the profit and the loss really well. So I just wanted to say thank you for that.
I have to thank Brian and his crew. They, they helped me out an awful lot in this stuff. My pages would be probably another 14 pages if I didn't, because I tend to go on and on, but Brian's team is incredible with this. I can't say enough about Brian's team.
Okay, I take it back then.
Brian, I hope he's still on here. I can't say enough about this crew. I really can't.
Brian's on.
They're a tremendous help to us. That's about all I have, Don.
Okay, any other questions? David, can you go celebrate your birthday now?
I guess so. I guess.
Are you coming, coming out to this, deal with the street situation?
I'm going to go up and stop at the job on the way home, but then I'll probably go home and fall asleep on the couch. All righty. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you very much, David. Okay, next up is the monthly town management and activity report, which is in your packet. I'm not going to go every, through every item. Just highlight some of the items that we've been working on the most lately or that have been, been generating the most activity. The Maticat Water Quality Improvement Plan, an update to that, to, to the Maticat Sewer, potential Maticat Sewer project is underway with respect to conceptual design and estimated cost. You, you all approved a contract with Weston and Sampson for this a couple of months ago. We've met with them, discussed the scope of work, and when we have something, some updates ready, we're going to bring those to the board and to some folks from Maticat that we've met with previously on this matter. The facilities master plan, we are still struggling to get an outline before you underway with COVID and some other things we've had to spend time on lately. That's been a little bit challenging, but we're working on it. We are working on a contract with Weston and Sampson for professional assistance in connection with the concession portion of the facilities master plan. So that will be coming to you pretty soon. The Baxter Road Long Term Planning Project continues. You all had an update about this at your last meeting. Lots of meetings going on, annual town meeting, of course. We have, those meetings are sort of increasing a little bit in frequency. Cape Cod Managers Meeting about a week and a half ago or so, maybe it was two weeks ago now. There was recent discussion about the American Rescue, Rescue Plan funding, and you all may have heard a little bit about this. Nantucket Town and Nantucket County will be getting funding as part of that plan through distribution from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. We are internally working on some kind of a broad potential spending plan for that. And we are kind of also, though, waiting for additional guidance from the federal government as to what, what specifically there might be in terms of restrictions or other sort of strings that may come along with that money. There, there will be audits at some point of how towns, cities and towns spent the funds, so we do want to be careful about it. But that will be coming to you, probably within the next couple of months. PFAS continues communications and planning. We are hoping to get something before you within the next month, month and a half on that. As far as an update goes, the commuter shuttle we talked about tonight. Solid Waste Long Term Planning continues with weekly meetings at DPW. We are working on a public buildings and offices phased reopening plan. It's not quite ready yet. We've met with the Nantucket Wildlife Response Team, the Marine Mammal Alliance of Nantucket. They both had submitted some information to the board fairly recently about assistance needs, and I think we've addressed those with them. The Mass Managers, Mass Municipal Managers Association, as I think I reported to you all before, I was able to be to volunteer and get appointed to their DEI task force. We had a meeting a couple of weeks ago. It was really interesting, and I'm keeping our DEI director informed and seeking input from him when those meetings are occurring. We had a recent internal update about our hazard mitigation plan and making sure that our projects are properly in our capital improvement plan, and we've got a little work to do on that. We're getting a little bit flooded with grant opportunities. And that's good in one way, but it's a little challenging in another way. We only have so many people to manage these grants, and these grants take managing. You can't just easily apply, get the money and be done with it. There's, there's restrictions, there's reporting, there's procurement requirements, there's coordination. And if it's not really a project that you weren't already geared up to do, then you got to gear up to do it, and then other projects tend to suffer. So we're trying to be a little selective about the grant opportunities that we're pursuing. We have a number of projects underway. The downtown sidewalk project, as you all know, is progressing on Easy Street and Lower Broad. The Surfside Area Road, Surfside Road area, we heard about tonight a little bit. Island Home, the stakeholder and community forums are continuing, and we are scheduling an update to review findings and input with you that has been gathered from those forums at your meeting on May 26. There, the, the solar project at Wanta Comet Property, we're working on ongoing response to some neighborhood concerns about that. The police reform bill, I think I've mentioned this earlier, we are preparing a report to review with the board in May as to what sorts of things will be required of the town and how we are intending to deal with those. The 2021 Nantucket Community Association Forum, I think I emailed you all about this recently, has been scheduled for Tuesday, July 13th at 9:30. It will be virtual. And at some point, I will give you all some proposed topics for you each to take on, and if you want to change that around, that's totally fine, but they like to know who's going to talk about what ahead of time. And the Resilient Nantucket, Resilience for Historic Resources Forum that was held last week, some of you were involved in that, and Matt, thank you for getting to that on Saturday for that. And Matt, thank you for getting to that on Saturday for that policy section. I think it went very well. We seem to have gotten pretty good feedback on it. So that's, that was very good. Some items that we're still trying to get back to that had to be just sort of shelved or put aside a bit because of the COVID, COVID-19 pandemic response, which obviously is still ongoing. We had real flurry of activity this week on that with the governor's announcements earlier in the week. Stormwater regulations are still in the queue. Sheep Pond Road is getting, it's, it's actively being worked on. We are working on long-term alternative access options. And I believe, I don't know, Rob is still on. Did you say the temporary access did happen today? I don't know if Rob is listening still or not.
Sorry, I am. Yes, Libby, it is. I met with the contractor yesterday, and my understanding is that the correction to the corner to allow the emergency vehicles to pass will be taking place tomorrow.
Fantastic. So that, that should be a welcome, welcome to the residents out there. We have some personnel or the regulations project, that, that's on my desk. I could show it to you right now, but I haven't got to it yet, but we're working on it. That's going to take a little coordination with the eight boards, committees and commissions that need to have public hearings to adopt the codified regulations. We have some ongoing personnel matters, collective bargaining negotiations continue. The Island Home Administrator position, we are still working to permanently fill that. We have managed to fill our Budget Analyst position in the Finance Department. And we are still struggling with the Transportation Planner. We do have a bit of a modified plan that is actively underway at this time. Lastly, I just wanted to mention that the Town Manager e-newsletter will be coming out tomorrow. It'll go out on social media. And if you're a subscriber to it, you will hopefully get it in your email sometime tomorrow. That's it. Happy to answer any questions.
Jason and Kristi?
Thank you, Libby. That's, that's a lot on everyone's play. The, you, you brought up the, the Town Manager newsletter. It's really good. Was it two months ago, I think, I sent something to you and Florencia and Greg and said, it was so comprehensive, it took me a couple of days to read it. And there were a couple of things in there that, that I didn't even know we were, we were doing. And so I, I think I wrote and said, you know, kudos to everyone. I think, you know, all select board members and anybody who wants to know what's going on. It's, it's a really good newsletter, and you can get little bits and pieces of it. And if you're interested in more, then you can dig in further. So I really appreciate that you putting time into that.
Thank you very much, Jason. And I really want to commend Florencia Rulo, our Public Outreach Coordinator, for putting that together. I mean, I write some of it. She puts everything together in such a nice format. And the department's all put something into it, too. So thank you to them. And if anybody out there wants to see something specifically referenced, explained or featured in some way, we're, we always are happy to take good content suggestions.
Kristi?
Thank you. Just in terms of hiring, and this isn't exactly town admin, but do you know if the Police Department has had any luck with hiring summer staff?
I probably will get an update about that in a couple of weeks. And I can certainly ask HR tomorrow about that. I think they ended up having a few more applications than we had maybe a couple of months ago, but still not the volume that we normally get. So we're doing our best to figure out how to handle that for the summer. But I can get you an update on that.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Common? Thank you. Our final item on the agenda is Select Board Committee Reports. Does anyone have anything this evening?
Matt?
Yeah, I, I sat in on a stakeholder meeting for the Island Home, and it was well done. It was very interesting. I, it was a small group with, and it was, you know, worth seeing how it's being done. It was a good job. I, like Libby said, I was the resilient Nantucket. I spoke at a forum on Saturday, I believe it was. And that was, it was a really good, the whole, the whole thing was really well done over a number of weeks. They're doing a lot of it. The thing that's kind of struck me is, I'd ask everyone to look back at the mid-year report, the mid-report for Arcadis, for Arcadis, because what we're facing, I think that we are not, it's, we're not good at looking ahead. Humans aren't, you know, we think things are going to be the way they are. We don't really think about how things are going to be in the future. And what we are facing, you always hear about, you know, it's a, oh, what's the existential problem? It sounds like really, like you're really smart when you say that. But it's, it's truly, it's going to be some, you know, it's, it's going to be way different. And things that are, are normal now, sort of, how do we, the Steamship Authority, in 30, 40, 50 years, we're going to have sort of high tide flooding in the areas. And we're, we're not going to have any way around it. So the sooner we can start to accept that and, you know, and start planning for that in, in all our decisions going forward, the better, the cheaper it will be and the better it will be in the long term. One thing I've sort of, maybe I've mentioned it before, we always talk about planned retreat. Well, before you can retreat, you have to stop going forward. And that's going to be, that alone politically and, you know, sort of politically and just emotionally, how are we going to, you know, sort of not build and not expand and not, you know, increase our risk in sensitive areas? And the sensitive areas aren't just along the water. So a lot of these issues are very, you know, are, are very difficult, you know, and it's going to take a lot of leadership. And we're going to have to follow what the, you know, actual facts in the future are going to be. In, for, for, the hope I have, though, is that we, and we, and there are things we're going to do that we don't even think are possible now. Like we may be moving on to, you know, on to land that's permanently protected. We may be moving the parts of the town to high ground. We might be doing, you know, sort of development, you know, transfer of development rights, et cetera, for some of these. People might be donating their, their ownership on properties over 20, 30 years. So when it's time for them to move, they've gotten some benefit out of it. And it become, that area will become, you know, sort of wetlands, et cetera. There's a lot of things that are going to happen. And I think, you know, it really is just sort of starting to come clear to me. I, even somewhere like Brant Point, I thought you could do, you could just block the water and everything would be fine. Well, as the sea level goes up, the water table is going to go up. And the water table is really low there. So there's going to be areas that we're going to have, we're going to have a really difficult time. And so I just think it's, it's great that we're looking ahead. We're way ahead of the curve from a lot of places on this. We've had a lot of the top specialists, top people in the world speak in these forums. And I think we're very fortunate, we're heading the direction we're heading as early as we are. So that's all I have.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved? Again?
All those in favor, by roll call, Jason Bridges?
Aye.
Kristi Parentella?
Aye.
Melissa Murphy?
Aye.
Matt Faye?
Aye.
John Holgate?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone. See you later.